Good morning, everybody. This is the Pawnee Business Council's meeting for January 11, 2017. It is 9:09 a.m., so we're calling the meeting to order. And at this time, we will have our invocation. And I ask our executive director to offer a prayer for our people.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and your wisdom and your strength as we conduct our nation's business on behalf of all of our tribal citizens, heavenly Father. And with Father, we ask that you, once each member of us, help us make wise decisions better than the part of our people, heavenly Father, here in Pawnee and wherever they may be. And we ask that you please keep those citizens safe, whatever their troubles or whatever their duties may take them, Father, with the likes of heavenly Father, these people are there. And let them know that they are always in our prayers. Heavenly Father, we ask that you please bless those families who are struggling through the loss of a loved one or a loved one who is sick or ill, heavenly Father, may you bless them and give them peace and give them calm and give them the love that you always give your people, heavenly Father. We ask. Heavenly Father, we always think of our veterans as well, whether they are serving here or serving abroad in life's way, heavenly Father, may you keep them safe and return them home to their families. And let them know that they are missed by everybody here in Pawnee, heavenly Father, as we constantly thank you and our safety. Heavenly Father, we thank you for such a beautiful day here in Pawnee. And thank you for this opportunity that we all have to serve our nation, heavenly Father. And you just continue to bless Pawnee Nation in all that we do. And we ask to say these things in the name of our son, Jesus Christ, dear. Amen.
Thank you. At this time, we will have a vote call, please.
Bruce Pratt?
Here.
Darryl Walker?
Excuse me.
Amy Wilson, here. Angela Condon?
Here.
Then we ask, here. Donna here?
Here.
Adrian Spotterschmidt?
Here.
Leanna?
Here.
Okay, we do have a form. Declare a form. It's the item number three, the approval of the agenda. So we can entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion, too, for the agenda.
Motion's made. Donna, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Leanna, seconds. Call for the vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Condon?
Yes.
Sammy Hansen?
Yes.
Donna here?
Yes.
Adrian Spotterschmidt?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
All right, the agenda is approved. We will move to item number four, and this is approval of the minutes. And we are looking at the Pawnee Business Council meeting minutes December 15, 2016.
On line 102, it should, I think it should be the Second Annual Tribal College Climate Change Conference College as we see. And on line 107, it says to do with the college applying for NIH grant. I forgot those initials. Or is it National?
National Development.
What did you mean? Okay, that's what I thought. And on the, on the very open forum, on line 235, it says, Leanna attended the Oklahoma Association Competition in Manford, where five Pawnee students participated. It was the Oklahoma Association for Academic Competition Alpha. Okay. Do I say anything about the Pawnee Elementary Academic Team? Okay, well, that's not in here.
Well, I figured it was a teaching in the Pawnee Park there.
No, that was a term. And the Pawnee students were the academic team.
I'll read it.
Okay, okay. And then on line 237, psychologist is filled out? D S Y C H O L O G I S. And then line 238, I would suggest social worker is retiring at an entity center.
I'll read this into that. Okay. Okay. I'll read those.
Okay, okay. Well, just the entity center. And then on the mental health office move. Can we add what the move is to video sessions? I don't know. They just didn't, they just weren't clear enough to me. And that's all of mine.
And then I had Darryl Walker, Stephanie for the time. I don't know what your name is down there. Anybody else take notes?
Oh, no.
For what? Do you mind on last night?
We have a lot of time.
I had Angela Walker there. Is that what you said? Yeah, I had Darryl.
All right, are there any more? Okay, we can entertain a motion with the chance.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's made. Donna makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Adrian, seconds. All right, call for the vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Condon?
Yes.
Sammy Hansen?
Stay.
Donna here?
Yes.
Adrian Spotterschmidt?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
All right, so the meeting minutes of December 15 are passed, so we will move to the Pawnee Business Council meeting minutes December 21, 2016.
I think we've got to make the motion that we accept the minutes for the special meeting July 21st to address this issue.
All right, motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second? Call for the vote.
Amy Wilson, yes. Angela Condon?
Yes.
Sammy Hansen?
Yes.
Donna here?
Stay.
Adrian Spotterschmidt?
Yes.
So those minutes are passed. So we will move to item number five, that is the Pawnee Business Council President's Report. I have one, one to report, and I went to the Southern Plains Tribal Health Board meeting yesterday. They have given Jennifer, girlfriend Jennifer Littleson, she's the executive director, they have reappointed her for another year. The Southern Plains Tribal Health Board has really amped up their game. They are really doing some good things. We passed a budget, their annual budget, it was almost $1.1 billion for 2017. Nick Walker-Paul, he is their HR Director, he is doing a fantastic job. And so, really, really had good things. Was really interested to hear the report given by the NIHB, the National Indian Health Board. Katrine Patrion was down from DC, and she gave a report of the efforts that they are making this new year with the incoming Trump administration and the efforts that they will be making to support health issues across the country. Really are looking for tribal input, tribal support as far as reaching out to congressmen, reaching out to Congress, trying to find those allies that we can to help Indian issues. The main one is being the Indian component, Indian provision, or IHS, and the Affordable Care Act, and, you know, keeping that intact. And so they're, 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 they said they're really going to have to earn your money this year, really going to have to earn it because there's a lot of unknowns with the Trump administration. But once again, we're all hopeful, we're all hopeful that things will go well for us. Introduced Seneca Smith to the other parts of the area as our CEO for the Pawnee Service Unit, and so he was down, and so it was good to see him. And so had a, had a good meeting, and it was long, it was a long meeting, but it was good. So that's my report, that's the only place I've been. And so, any questions? So we'll move to item number six, Business Council Committee Reports, Tribal Reports, Assemblyman's Reports. And we'll start with Donna.
I have my committee or tribal report.
Okay. Leanna? All right.
No travel.
All right. Amy?
Good morning. You know, on the, on the night I went to proposal reviewing that was held, the conference room, we just approved two proposals for funding for the DCS Department of Division, and went over the grant that was needed when the law, not when the DCS was. And it's just basically reapplying for, for grants that we already have right now. And then, Tuesday evening, I came here to the election meeting, we have a lot, I enjoy the foremother, and I'm inviting the foremen, I mean, we still have a lot of fundraising ideals for the election meeting. Trying to find a really hard guess, and I'm trying to say the weekend after, there's a week, they're planning right now, but we're trying to get that back there. We're, I'm, I'm hoping on that. And that's something on the meeting that I feel is required.
All right. Thank you. Sammy?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Adrian?
I went to a budget meeting the other day, and we had a lot of, we discussed a few, just got some here at council, so it's a little bit of that, that's all I, that's all I did.
All right. We'll go back to you, Leanna.
Oh, okay. Okay, I attended the budget meeting, I'm sure Angela will be covering all that, so I'm looking for this to page a minute. I also attended the proposal reviewing, and I'm not sure, are we having resolution on this? Or not? No, okay, so we've got to take care of CWI water pollution control base funding and nonprofit source pollution. We discussed, we, we had a good meeting. I also, Darrell and I came up to the meeting on January 6th with DIA representative Sherri Love, and then we began that at this council. So, has it been rescheduled? No, okay. Amy, let's see.
All right, thank you. We will move to item number eight, TBC Report. And I don't see. Oh, I'm sorry. Where am I at? Oh, travel request, never mind. Any requests? All right, thank you. Oh, no, okay. Everything was taken care of last time. As far as the present report, let me say this, on the 30th, we're going to have a Unicop meeting here, United Indian Tribes Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas. And so we are hosting that meeting here, and we're going to do a presentation on our lawsuit by the ED and Monkey and AG, and also for the earthquake issues that other tribes are having, and then whatever else that they have on the agenda. So just FYI, that is coming on the 30th, I think, it'll start probably at 10 o'clock on the 30th, so if you can, 10, that would be great. So we-
Are we doing refreshments?
Uh, the, Unicop takes care of the cost of that, but we will, we will hit you up on that, so.
Get to know.
What was that question?
Are we providing refreshments?
That would be good. We could do the, the opening for refreshments, but the deal is here. Yeah, we can do that.
Well, I mean, we're hosting this, if we make a good impression.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put that sent here to you. Okay, well, we're over there, doesn't look like we're inviting such a good year.
All right, let's move on to item number eight, TBC Report, and I do not see Roger here. On his way, okay, we will come back to that. Pawnee Nation College Report. I don't see Mr. Burgess here either. He's on his way, all right. We are, we are moving fast.
President, I have to ask that they be here, though.
Oh, they're good.
Well, I know that, but they should, they should be here now to present. They are expected to be here at nine, at nine fifteen, so we don't have to bump around.
Darryl, this is one of the big problems they want. Have you ever seen my coaches here? They just started screaming at the end of the game.
We will move to the, this is Donna, thank you. And we will move to the Executive Director Report.
I'm on my way. Okay, good morning, council. So we got through 2016, which is a good thing. It was a, it was a trying year, but we've, we've made some improvements, and we look forward to making further improvements. I've outlined in my Executive Director Report some of the goals that I've taken for 2017, and I've already started many, some of them, and I've already put the division directors under us, these are what my goals are for the executive office. My goal number one is leadership. We, from the top down, we have to do a better job of providing leadership and creating leaders, because I still want entry-level employees in our manager's positions, and our managers in the manager's position, director's positions. And the way we're going to do that is provide that type of training that they need, so they can have the skill set for leadership development. And we already started, we started last year with the leadership training, the Pawnee Nation Leadership Development Course, the first section with our managers and supervisors and coordinators, and we're having another one January 24th, so next week, for geared specifically for our division members. We're doing this for not only the leadership portion, but we also, we're working towards a step scale in the salary, and we are creating these trainings, supervise certificates to incentivize people to attend and better themselves, so that we can then reward them with a pay raise on a step scale, slight step scale, sort of like how the government does it with their GS positions. You know, we, we had, our first class was a full day of training, and I thought it looked really well, I think our managers got a lot out of it. We're going to continue tailoring some of our, our classes to address some of the weaknesses we still see, but overall, I'm pretty happy with the way that training went, and looking forward to training our division directors as well. My second goal, 2017, is records management. We have a real issue with records management here, and this for a variety of reasons. One is turnover, you know, one is, you know, space, the longer we're government, the work that we're necessarily that we create. And the other one is we just, we have a lot of employees that just don't know. So we already started that process of records management, we already brought in a consulting group, we're going to continue to, we're at least nominally continue to drive our division directors and our managers to be very mindful of records management, record storage. One of that is, you know, we, we in the nation have a record management policy, but the other thing is, is we need our program coordinators to tailor their records management system to their funding agencies, to make sure that they're aligned, not only in the nation's policy, but with their funding agency's policy as well. So, you know, we're, we're tasking them, and, you know, my office is going to be working closely with the directors to develop a schedule of records for each one of their divisions and their programs. That way we can reduce some of the clutter in the nation, and if we go looking for important documents, we'll know where to find them. It's just good government, and good governance. So that's my second goal. My third goal is finding ways to increase revenue within the nation. And I'm not talking about the revenue that, you know, TBC generates. TBC is what TBC is, but the Pawnee Nation has its own way of generating revenue. We have to, in order to maintain our operations during the lean times, we, I've been around Pawnee long enough to know that it goes through cycles, and, you know, where in the downturn, you know, it affects us pretty hard. And I'd like to see the nation find ways, better ways of creating sustainable revenue sources, and one of the ways that we do that as government is taxation. And, you know, we have land, we have businesses that do business within our jurisdiction, we have laws that we can follow, but we have weaknesses in the laws as well. So the first step that needs to be done in what the Attorney General and I have already started, is scrubbing our codes and attempting to bring them, at least draft codes up to date, to present to everybody. We also want to look to the Uniform Commercial Code. We think it's a really good idea to have UCC as part of the nation's law. We don't have to adopt all of it, I mean, some of it doesn't really apply to tribal government, but a lot of it applies to tribal government, and we already talked with the general counsel for the UCC, and, yeah, Mr. Mason, I forgot what his name was, he's been very supportive, given us a lot of information. The UCC, the, the body that makes the UCC is working very hard, diligently at creating the UCC, tailored specifically for tribal law, specifically with Article 9, secure transaction stuff and probate stuff. So, you know, we're, we're going to look at UCC to bring that into play here at the nation, because it makes it very entertaining for people to incorporate with Pawnee Nation if we have a uniform commercial code, which generally, I mean, all it's, all it's about is the sale of goods, is what, is so basically anything that's not filthy or real property. Goal number four is still divisive. We've been contacting Campbell, we're waiting to hear back from him, where they're at, the process, I know that he's very busy communicating with his producers and his processing plants and the national parks as well. We're also doing a, in running to do a control burn of the 422 acres here to clean it up and build fencing, make the fencing back in shape. So that'll be a big project, it'll, it'll probably, not probably, I know it will, it will encompass Property Division, Department of Natural Resources, or Division of Natural Resources and Safety and Terra, because the fencing there needs to be updated, the old timber, it's been overgrown in areas, needs to be replaced. We're also looking at getting with OSU Extension Office to look about reseating that back 422 acres with native Oklahoma grasses. We think it's a good idea to take advantage of the process, although it's a matching thing, we're, we're still at very early stages of the process. But it's going to take a while, it's going to probably take a couple of burns really to get that, that acre to start to yield from the overgrazing and the overuse of its experiences and its lifetime. And goal number five is efficiency. You know, we, we need to be efficient and we need to be disciplined as a government, and right now, we're looking towards discipline, we still have a few issues outstanding here and there, but overall, I feel that our divisions are making substantial progress towards the discipline that they need in order to carry out the bureaucratic functions that we expect them to. The other side of that is efficiency, and the whole end of that, in result, is our move towards self-governance. That's the goal of Pawnee Nation, and, you know, those are the two areas that'll help us the most in the game. So we'll continue that, I think, with the leadership training, also with the constant, you know, we've increased the way we do our evaluations of employees, at least twice a year for our employees. So, again, provide positive feedback, I mean, we don't want these evaluations to turn into, you know, disciplinary proceedings, because it's not a report, we're, we're an opportunity for employee and employer, supervisor and employee together, and talk about, you know, what we can do better, what you're doing great, and so we can grow. Also, my report, we're, we're waiting on the insurance adjuster, we're waiting on his final report. I talked with Kudus, and the last thing that they, I guess, that the adjuster needed was something from Kudus stating their desire to, whether or not they wanted to do the wall scraping test on every single one of the buildings for lead and asbestos or whatnot, and I've been in contact with Mike Enson. Kudus has given us their estimate possibly. Kudus has given us their estimate, cost estimate is around $260,000 for that spare building. That's the stone masonry and everything else that's associated with it. Of course, changing that is, you know, we're still getting earthquakes, so we don't worry about that. Anyway, no new word on the lawsuit. We don't know if, I don't think so, I don't think that the agencies have filed an answer yet. We did file a CA appeal, well, not, it wasn't even an appeal, it was just a, it was just a letter of support for Jeremy Loveham's decision. And I think, I think that's it. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. What is the strategy for your records management?
Well, you know, the strategy for records management is to come up, A, with a schedule of records for each office, right? Something that we can standardize within each office, that any new employee can go to a, basically a best business practices notebook and say, okay, this is what we do for records. The other thing is digitizing a lot of the important records. And we're looking at, we're looking at whether or not we can do it ourselves, or if we have to outsource that, that task to somebody, just because we have so many records floating in space right now. And so we're still trying to determine what the actual cost would be. And we're trying to figure out whether or not we can handle that on our own. I'm going to give my division directors the time to come up with a plan, and if I don't feel it's going to be a doable plan, then we'll look at other ways. But it has to be done. And the last, last thing is for records management is our long-term storage of our important vital documents. We, I had an issue trying to find that Business Corporation Act. It took us a long time to find, you know, that document. And it's a law. It's a law passed by the nation. We shouldn't have an issue finding it. Should be able to go to trial court and pull it off the shelf, and, you know, there it is. So that concern would be solved. Our important documents need to be digitally scanned, stored into offsite storage somewhere, whether it be cloud or a third party. And we also need to have a long-term storage facility, climate control so we can store the resolutions and the acts and the things of the Business Council, Business of the Business Council. Those are, we need to keep them perpetuated. So that's the plan right now.
Okay. Thank you. Just on the forward to that question. I believe, I mean, I'm not for sure if it was an unfunded mandate, but we could still investigate whether it's management.
Okay.
But I don't know in other places that the funding is not there or it's very limited. So you might want to check to see what our tribal share is at.
Okay.
If it's a contract.
That's a good idea. We have millions of space for, for a place, you know, we just need to find the resources to bring them up to speak.
Yes, and then the equipment costs are high.
Yes.
High.
It's very high.
Yes, it's expensive. My question, follow-up question was on the deductible for the insurance. Are we going to have to cover any out-of-bout expenses for that?
I don't know off the top of my head because I haven't received anything from the insurance company. They are not going to submit anything until they have all the work from Kudus, their adjuster. And once that report is submitted to us with a final projection, then I'll be able to give an answer.
Do you want to include the deductible, $100,000?
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a little bit more than $100,000.
All right, all right, thank you, just kidding.
I will, yes, ma'am. Any further questions? Thank you. Thank you. I've been in contact with Mike. Okay, this one is, yeah.
This time we'll have our TDC report. Roger, come here.
Well, good morning, everybody. We have a lot going on, obviously, as far as improvements are going. First of all, starting with the construction of the expansion at Stone Wolf. If you've been by in the last week to 10 days, you're starting to see a lot of things going up, mining and iron. And so you can actually be starting to see the progress. Most of the footings have been poured, some of the pad concrete has been poured, and so things are starting to move along. We are on track to be able to have both entrances, north and south entrance, and the fuel offerings at the plaza early in February, somewhere between the 7th and the 14th. They are putting up the canopy that the fuel dispensers are under now. And so the entrance and everything should be open between the 10th, excuse me, between the 7th and 14th of February. That would be huge for us because we've been very limited on business at the plaza as well as parking and everything else involved with, everything locked off. So that can't get easier than that for us. We've been doing some improvements at the C stores in town, the North C Store, BJ's, of course, the awning was put on, we've talked about in past meetings. The parking lot was repaired during the holiday season yesterday. Parking was poured at Snack and Pack, depending on the weather and the drying time of the concrete. We're hoping to have that open Monday at the latest. And with the 70-degree weather and stuff today, maybe even a little bit earlier in the weekend. So we'll be excited to have that open. Also, with improvements continuing at the C stores, we are starting painting on the interior of both stores, BJ's being the first one that we're getting started on this week. As far as everything else, you know, obviously we've been going through a financial downtime with all the construction issues out at Stone Wolf. And so we're just biting a bullet to get into fit in order that we have full capability as far as entrance and stuff. And those things are, we just can't wait to get there because it is putting a burden on us financially right now. As far as every goals and what's going on in 2017, you know, in the past year to year and a half, TDC has grown greatly in the number of entities that we are operating. In 2017, we've got to take some time to nurture those entities, from the C stores and the improvements that we're doing, to Pawnee Star, to the construction company, and trying to grow its bonding capabilities. We've got some major efforts in 2017 to just nourish those babies in those businesses in infant stages to get them to where they're productive and need to be. And then the other thing that we have all talked about, and whether we've gone to USDA meetings or what, is try to take advantage of some of the funding through USDA, USDA, and working with the nation and starting some agricultural-type businesses and whatever they may be. And to me, those are the two areas that really need the emphasis for the most part in this year. I apologize a little bit for razzle right now. I received a real, a family phone call, it was really bad right before I walked in here, so I'm a little bit shaken right now, so I apologize for that. But that's my report. Any questions?
The only question that I have, Roger, is I had a budget committee meeting this past week or last week, and I was informed that we haven't received the revenue share payment.
Yeah, and I, I received an email from Mr. Harrison earlier, and I answered that, we're processing distribution payments and the third quarter gaming assessment fee this week.
Okay, right, thank you.
And, you know, part of the, part of the problem is gaming assessment fees are based on the previous year. And so we've been going through this downtime in gaming, you know, with, with the construction and everything, and having, and paying assessment fees based on last year. So, you know, we're semi-why is paying more than what, you know, the flip side of that, though, is next year in 2018, it will be, or, excuse me, 2017 will be based on gaming performance in '16, which the numbers are down. So there's going to be a time when I see expansion opens that are for everybody who's up, but we're going to be paying less in assessment because it's based on, so that it balances out, but that is going on right now.
Roger, do you need to be excused?
No, fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Do you have pictures or any of what the expansion is going to look like in the final completion? Because I still have not yet seen the new look.
I have pictures. Are you okay about this? Test. We have pictures and we have renderings. The only thing that's inaccurate on the renderings is the canopy for the gas coverings are shown to be matching with the building site. We can't do that until we become unbranded and to get that canopy to look like the rest of the building. As of now, it will still have to have the Phillips colors and symbols on it. But other than that, I have, yes, accurate renderings.
And could we get those or could I?
We are actually, yeah, I am posting those right now on the website. We just found out yesterday and took pictures of the progress on the construction, and I'm posting those as well as that. But I can, I can get those to you also, yes. Hold on. Good morning. Yes.
Okay, great. One of the things that coming up from the West Coast and moving here was a big market for organic foods. And we have a lot of land out there, both Stone Wolf and I was wondering if you had any ideas or thoughts to having a little garden for the, for salads and the beans and what have you. Those are big sellers? And what about you guys?
Yeah, the, my thoughts on that is when we attended the USDA meeting, when was that? Yeah, a couple of months ago. One of the programs that they have was, I'm trying to remember what they call them, they weren't greenhouses, but they're something very similar, something to, towards, it's actually a greenhouse-type situation where there's funding that they have through USDA to where you can control climate more. You're not heating and cooling them, but it's a covering that allows you to control some factors of the climate. And that's one of the things I was alluding to that I think would be very beneficial. Yeah, I don't, my opinion would be the 20 acres to the north would not be the area to establish that. It would be some more of the local acres, owned by Pawnee Nation, to, to open up and do something like that.
Yeah, they typically have them right up their back door. When there's no shade or nothing, they're just. But yeah, great, that would be hopefully something that would be very much.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Blessing to you. All right, and so we will move to the Pawnee Nation College report.
Good morning. I apologize that I don't have electronic coffee for you. This is a place in our computer system. So trying to catch up with the office. Use your portable and send that by original, by email. It's not right to the office. But as you know, our board of trustees meeting is coming up, planned for Thursday, excuse me, Friday and Saturday. The weather's amazing. This weekend. The board of trustees meeting, Pawnee Nation College, is planned for Friday and Saturday. However, a weather committee.
Okay, I thought it was on the 16th, I have it on my calendar.
I have a copy of my old December report, it's January 13th to 14th. They scheduled it, the last time they were in town, but we didn't have it. 16th being a holiday.
The 13th.
13th to 14th. That was their choice. Again, weather committee.
I'm sorry, I may keep interrupting, but I'd like to see the agenda, so, because I planned, I planned a plan on a handy, so I'd like to see what's the agenda for the whole day so that I can.
I just received agenda recommendations from DOT late this afternoon, so I'll add those to another plan and then put that out.
I appreciate it, thank you.
We're still enrolling for the upcoming 2017 spring semester here. And of course, we're still in that work with McCombs College. However, I'm still seeking other partnerships, and NOC had responded during the holiday break, that we may have a concurrent enrollment, a MOU with them. And so I have yet to hear back from the vice president at Northern McCombs College to set that up so that we can be servicing the high schools here in the region. And that would be a boon for the students. It wouldn't be any income for us, but it would be something that the students who generally don't go to your tier one, the tier two colleges, could start off with us right out of high school or while they're in school. You have two, three instructors who have done concurrent high school classes before. So our plan is to take them to the school, and we'll just permit and let them teach there. I receive a credit through both Pawnee Nation College and NOC. And I approached Langston, I also approached Sacred Area University down in Shawnee, who has a concurrent program with Shawnee High School. Not a whole lot to report. You know, you're aware of the audit. I told this morning that it might be completed by next week, which is fine. And that will allow us to move forward to get an indirect cost rate. We'll try to find all the audits that contrived in this one year and in applying an indirect cost rate. We are finishing up, today's the final day, that we'll work on a grant with the National Department of the Matheus, that would be increasing curriculum for us and help pay for a one-half time of instructor and establish, we hope, people will be involved with the radio journalism program, community-wise, not for, not for accreditation, but just to get the program started and community people. Who want to take lessons and learn to produce a radio show program, enunciation, how to, how would you say? In my classes, we had to do a five-minute news script, so you can dance news and put it over the radio, and that would be on the internet. So that's one of the plans right now. I don't have a whole lot to report, but we've been slow here with December. We look like we're on schedule with the same 38 plus, I think we have seven new students. And we're offering classes at a reduced rate for seniors from the community who want to take Microsoft, I should say, Computer Basics classes. And we're giving those to community members who are not credit. It's $75 for the class, for those who want to take the class, the basic computer operations. And hopefully they will go into either taking more classes for Microsoft Office or other areas of computer expertise. I have a question on budget. When do you need our budgets submitted? Yes, I'm working on the budget now, I'll present it to the tribe.
We look to, we discussed this at budget committee, and we're looking at probably March, April for issuing a budget call.
Okay.
Just to be look out for that.
That, I'll be putting that on the agenda with my DOT and have a presentation with them to approve a budget to be submitted to the tribe.
Right, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah. What are the classes those three instructors are experiencing in? The three instructors you're talking about, what classes would be offered?
We're talking American Indian history and mostly the social science. We're talking American Indian history and mostly the social sciences. We're talking American Indian history and I believe it was English comptroller. But we have two different instructors that we'll have to work with on that.
Okay. American Indian history?
Yes.
And is that approved?
Approved?
I was thinking with concurrent, it's a very basic...
It would be a college-level class that we're offering. So, it's already approved under Macon, which is going to be offered to students at the high schools.
Yeah. I mean, would that be approved through the concurrent program, the state?
If, if NOC wants to go, go that route.
Right. Okay. And then what was the grant for? What did you say? Radio or what?
National Department of Humanities to expand our curriculum and course offerings.
For radio?
Well, one of them is speech. Within that class, we're offering radio announcing.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Where is that meeting in New York?
At our staff orders. Our, our DOT meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, at staff orders.
Weather committee.
Do you have an idea if we can't leave? Do you have an idea when it might be?
That's up to the DOT. I've asked, I've sent you emails. I've asked all the DOT to be aware of the weather. I've already had word from two, if not three, one, Corbilla and Julia, both live in Kansas. And they're going to be worse than we are. Julia is our vice chair, Mrs. Goodfords. And then Mr. Rieding, unless Rieding from Texas. And they had more ice and snow down south than we had up here the last one. Because I know lockdown pretty, pretty bad. So, we may not have a form as we have six members. But that's, I'm asking for them to be noticed as soon as possible. They're saying probably the latest they can let us know will be Thursday if they're going to make, these people make it or not. So, we'll have to announce a rescheduled date when they all agree.
Okay. I'll give you notice now. Weather staff will make it easier.
Okay. Well, I'll send an email and let them know that maybe it's just go ahead and staple it to reschedule and to worry about the weekend the last year.
All right. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number eleven, which is Attorney General Report. You all have received this report. Do you all have any questions?
Mr. President, the report was emailed this morning. It was right a little late. Hopefully I have a copy. I stand beside the report. NYI, Department of Health Insurance, Attorney General Department of Health, it's been a long, it's been a really good, we have to get meetings, we stop up forward to everything working out.
About that, how long is that coming? You guys just went through the whole?
We sure did. We went through the whole thing, as we did. And the commission members you have are very competent. They comprehend it. They're toward easily. They're already looking at establishing timelines and there'll be subsequent meetings. They have my contact info in case there's any costs or questions. So, I think it's good. It's also a great start.
I have a question. Is there any recent, do you have any problem with your internet? I was just wondering about sending us the report directly.
I had a staff member of their division call to send it to you directly. It was supposed to be out about seven-thirty this morning. If you haven't received it?
I have received it. I'm just wondering why it's not coming to you directly?
Usually she's my helper. She helps me. I'm not, I've got to be honest with you. I'm not good about putting things. I'm not good at making heads pretty.
All right.
She's good at that.
That was my question.
If it's not pretty, we don't want it.
There you have it. Exactly.
But thank you.
That's okay.
We are trucking along. Do you all need a break? Just take ten minutes. We'll take ten minutes and then we'll start into business. Item number twelve, so we'll take that ten minute break. All right. All right. All the meeting back to board? And we are on item number twelve, which is bold business. Item number one, approval of revision to resolution sixteen one oh nine, position change from Taylor to secretary.
But all we're doing is changing the authority to secretary. Is it a change in the act?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution sixteen one oh nine.
I second.
All right. Donna. So, Adrian made the motion and Donna second. Call for the vote.
Randy Robertson, yes, Andrew Thompson?
Yes.
Can I ask him?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spurkhorstein?
Yes.
Brandon T. Cruz?
All right. So, that passes. And we will move on to item number thirteen. We are into new business. And we are, as item number one, are the I consulting, burial insurance presentation. So, we have the folks from Quahal make the, make the trip down this way. And so, we are here to listen to you.
Presentation from our tribe is just your tribe for our council, available over probably country. There's a whole slew of different things in there, but I was very glad to hear that you said, man, about growing the new thing in the gardens. Because we, we, we try so hard even up in northeast Oklahoma. We try some, we just want whole food, you know? We just want something to where we can get something natural. So, I think that was an excellent point. Thank you for bringing that up. On here, it says that we're talking about the burial insurance presentation. That's just a small part of this. And so, I will be careful of my time. I would ask my brother Todd, who's our sales director, to hand out a presentation. What we actually do is I have owned an insurance brokerage, a third-party administrator, and a utilization company for health insurance for several years. And we're completely native-owned. We're not, we're not a fifty-one percent owned company or something. I own one hundred percent, which is kind of a double-edged sword, but we're, we're expanding and we're expanding greatly. And the new administration actually is, is actually forcing Indian country to take a different look at healthcare. So, I'm trying, I'm a, I'm a realist and I know that things are changing. And for those, I'm sure everybody on this council is, is aware that the Indian Healthcare Reauthorization Act, as well as the Education Assistance Act, is also in the Affordable Care Act. That's just a builder, add-ons to it. So, that's still unknown as to what that's going to do. However, we've been doing these plans. Let's kind of tell you a really short version of what, what we do. About seven years ago, our tribe, I'm a member of the Quahal tribe. And our tribe was having huge difficulties with, we only have around six hundred people who live within our contract health services district. So, we, council came to me and basically said, because I was working with outside hospitals with insurance and those types of things, I ran about three hundred different doctors' offices and hospital business offices. That was what my experience was in. And then I also did insurance on the side. And my council actually asked me to come up with a plan that would, their biggest complaint was the people that lived outside of the area were not being covered. They couldn't get to an Indian health service clinic. They couldn't get to an even urban Indian clinic. And what they were feeling was people were not getting something from the tribe. So, they were getting multiple complaints. And some of them were founded, some of them were not. But the, the sheer reality of it was, they asked me to come up with a solution. And the solution to me was, I looked at several different solutions. But I came back to them after a lot of thought and prayer, quite frankly, is I studied what we were not, what was not covered, the unmet needs, we always say in Indian health services and those types of things. And my family has been, has worked in Indian health services for forty years. My uncle Lloyd Buffalo created the northeastern tribal health system, or the Miami clinic. My grandpa Buffalo wrote the original charter for that in the early seventies. And one of the things that we were, were faced with is that it just wasn't enough. It was good for the people that lived in our area, but not for the outing. So, I started from the standpoint of why do we create the wheel? We already have networks of insurances. And what I, what our, what my council didn't understand were that you might bill, you know, the hospital might bill you a hundred thousand dollars, but the insurance company's only going to pay out what their managed care rate was, which might be two thousand dollars for that same a hundred thousand dollar charge. If you did not have health insurance, you would, you would be stuck with the whole hundred thousand dollar bill. But the challenge that my council gave me way back then was, we still need to have a way so that if we do create an insurance program for the membership, that if we can still, it will still come back through our tribal economy for our own clinics, our own clinic network. And we use the Clamor Indian Hospital as one of, we're one of the governing members of that. And I sat on the board of that as well. And I saw a lot of discrepancies and a lot of, not really discrepancies, I guess I would say. We were, we were not paying for almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month in what's now called PRC or Pay-Refer Care, formerly known as Contract Health Services. And so, many of our people from all thirteen of the tribes that are serviced by the Clamor Service District, they, they were not getting those, those treatments. So, I tried to just take and think completely outside of the box. And I said, why is it that just because we're Native American, we can't have health insurance? What, what are the barriers? So, I went, I actually went to DC and started asking those questions to senators. I said, what are the, what are the barriers? And I found out that the senators didn't know, which told me that I needed to talk to their health directors. And I spoke to their health directors and their health director said, you know, there really aren't. There are a few things that procedurally you could get changed, those kind of things. Well, a very long, long story shorter, we got those changed. And the Quahal tribal member plan has been in place for, this is our sixth year. It's been called by many of our people, one of the most successful programs in the history of our tribe, which makes me very proud. I don't take all the credit for it. Our council is who approved it. They, they said, here's the unmet need. I may have, me and my team came up with different ideas and we tried to select the best one. And it took a lot of legal work, it took a lot of footwork, but we got there. But what I was amazed at were just the personal stories of what we were having. Because people weren't just not going to the doc, or not, you know, not being able, once they got to the doctor, to get the services paid for it. They just weren't going because of the fact that they couldn't pay in the first place. It's kind of the reason the Affordable Care was created in twenty-ten. But I think what, the reason why I chose this year to really start going out to all the tribes and discussing this is currently the tribes that we have doing this are the Wichitas and the Quahals. I, I did that on purpose because I didn't want to grow too big, too fast. We did, we, we own several other businesses. And so, this one is the one that is really my passion, one of my most, my biggest passion, basically. RWI is a brokerage. We also do the, you know, casinos and the health insurance and all the different benefit plans for different, different tribes throughout the country, which I was, I will be soliciting for your business as well. The, the second piece to it is native care health. Native care health is the DPA, which a lot of people consider an insurance company. But really what it is, is it's a, it's a third-party administrator that administrates self-funded plans. Self-funded plans are really what you're going to see really, really dramatically grow in the coming four years. You're going to see very rapidly our new president's administration change healthcare. The, there's good and bad to it. The bad would be is if you're not prepared. But the good would be is that you actually have some more flexibility as Native Americans. One of the things that I found was that we as Native Americans now are taking full access to our sovereignty. And healthcare is something that's been promised to us since seventeen ninety-one in federal law. So, we have a Health and Human Service Secretary about to be passed who's, who's saying we need to follow federal law, which we, that's the argument we made and that's how we got our tribal membership plan. Health and Human Services actually had to stop down the, on the healthcare authority because they wanted the tribal member plan to be primary over even Medicaid and every other service. But that, that's not how it was. I said, this is a, this is a plan that is fully administered by a tribe. It's owned. The money comes from there. The money can come from any of your businesses, including your social, if you have current social service programs. I'll tell you kind of very quickly how we did it at our tribe. We took, we were already paying for dental, vision, reimbursement, they were all reimbursements for health up to certain dollar amounts for, you know, all the different types of social service plans that many tribes have. I added up the money. It was about two point nine ninety is what we were spending. And what was disheartening to me was that working in the insurance industry, the first example I gave you, when people spend, you know, they get a bill for that, I don't know if you've ever looked at your explanation of benefits from your insurance companies, but what they actually charge versus what they actually pay. And that other part is just written off. That's why our healthcare system is such a mess, quite honestly, because we never deal with the real, the real problem, which is the actual cost. However, that's, that's a different form. And we are working on that. I work building with Maryland with Indian Health Services as well as with Health and Human Services. And I look forward to working with the new administration because no matter what, they're here. So, we have to just, we're going to have, we're going to have to work together. And I think we can find common ground. And I actually think that the tribes that are willing to work together and try to work for it are going to get a lot farther. So, my presentation today, it looks pretty worried, but essentially how the health program works is you have an insurance card, just like you do any other, just like your Wood Cross card or Redna or whatever. About fifty to seventy-five percent of your people will already have health insurance of some sort. Or they'll go to a clinic that, that they live within that area. The others will, will be, let's say, for example, they go to your clinics and they, you don't offer that service. They're going to be outsourced. So, instead of your pay refer care dollars being used, you can actually use dollars to fund tax-free your tribal membership plan. One of the ways that I discussed, was just discussing, was we could do a six thirty-eight contract. There's different ways to do these types of programs. There's a lot of, there's a lot, basically a lot of ways to spend the same cap. And one of the things that I'm hoping to, to convince you of is that you guys are really very high in the area of help already. That's one of the reasons why I wanted your tribe to be the next example of how they can go to the next level. Because the number one complaint I get from tribal members of all different tribes, because I speak nationally, I, I run the Niaga, the Waiga, Res, all of those health tracks. I speak at all of those. I usually decide where the speakers are and all those super types of things. And I really think that the tribal membership plans are the next level. That's what, it has taken our tribe from a tribe that was the most, one of the most unhealthiest tribes in the Midwest to, in the second month of having our tribal membership plan six years ago, we've gone six hundred people out of five thousand that have had diabetes. They never would have found that before. They never would have found that before. We did, we found, here's a really sad statistic. We found six women within the first three months that were under the age of twenty-nine, I believe it was, twenty-six, that had cervical cancer. Thankfully, all but one is still living. They were able to get treatment and they did those things. Because young people have a tendency to not believe that they should check on their health. So one of the things we do within our tribal membership plans, we advocate to the members directly. Because many people see tribal councils, executive committees, even general councils as a, they're in my business, so they know too much about me. So having a third party gives you an arms-length away to administer something like this. So one of the things I really love about it is that when people call me, they can say, did the council ask you about me? And I can honestly say, I'm not allowed to think about information, you know, we have to follow the same rules as every other third-party administrator. Now, the tribes do have the right to ask for that, but I have to give permission from the member. But here's the flip side. We go through about eighteen different processes to make sure that there's no fraud that's going on, that there's no duplication of claims, that there's, it's a tremendous amount of things. We do this every day. We average around ten thousand claims a month in our clients. And so one of the things I really, another thing, another trend I've been seeing, this is what my biggest competitor is doing right now, is they're going around selling these cards that are pre-filled with money. Well, that's no different, and it's basically a pre-filled credit card. Well, I've tried to talk to many tribes and say, use your experience and think to yourself, do you believe that every member in your tribe is going to be honest and only use that for healthcare? Or only use that for dental, or only use those for the types of things? Because if they don't, they've just got themselves in trouble. And because it's not a tax, it's a taxable event if you don't use those for healthcare-related events. So those pre-filled cards, in my opinion, from my experience, are a terrible idea. If you could guarantee that no one would ever commit fraud, or that no one would ever, they couldn't pay their electric bill, wouldn't use that card, then I would say, let's go for it and attach a network to it. But the problem is, is if you preloaded that thing with five thousand dollars, the five thousand dollars could be spent on anything they want with a healthcare plan. What you're doing is actually limiting and putting things to where somebody is watching over it and overseeing it, making sure that there's accountability. So if there's, I can actually even show you trends in your healthcare so that if there's a huge amount of diabetes or a huge amount of whatever, those types of things, those are the ways that we work through those. And I don't want to take hours and hours to explain it because I know that you have lots of other things on those things, but I'll be happy to stay for open forum or whatever you want to answer questions on that. But essentially what I offered here were three different plans. And it's not just about burial assistance. Burial assistance is something that is very common throughout all of Indian country. And the great thing about tribal membership plans is you decide how they work. You just have to make sure that it's the same for the people across the board or by class. So for example, option one is a two thousand, option two is a three thousand, option, excuse me, option two is a three thousand, option three is a five thousand dollar benefit. That covers dental, vision, pharmaceuticals, which is where you can get a huge bank for your buck. Because when people go spend their reimbursements, some of those pharmaceuticals that cost four hundred dollars, literally after the discounts, it's not like a discount card, it's an actual, what's called a PBM, a pharmacy benefit manager for that piece. Every member in our program gets a card that'll actually say the Pawnee tribal membership plan. And it says, this is a valid insurance policy, it's called ER to verify benefits and eligibility. And basically it becomes a secondary insurance for anybody who already has health insurance. So how would that help, you might ask yourself? And that would be, one of the things that should put a red flag in your ears is that we've heard HSA is how savings account over and over and over from the Trump administration. Let me tell you what it's going to mean. That's going to mean that deductibles are going to go up a tremendous amount. So you may go from a thousand dollar deductible to a five thousand dollar deductible as your average deductible. The average person does not have five thousand dollars laying around. Doctors are not required to see patients. You know, MTAHLA, the Emergency Medical Treatment Labor Act, does require them to treat them and stabilize them. But if somebody comes in with a cough and they stop coughing, they're done. So they really don't, the only time that really comes into effect is if they have a heart attack or something like that, or a chest pain, or they're bleeding, those types of things. So the sad, the sad reality of what will happen is as these plans escalate, you're going to see less and less doctors taking people unless they can cover those deductibles and those co-insurances and those out-of-pocket boxes. Those are the pieces that we forget about sometimes, even people with insurance. The, what I've found is that on the primary insurance, if you use this as primary, if somebody has no other health insurance, it's typically the people who live within your contract of service history. And so they usually go to your clinic. Anyway, that's typically what I've seen in the work that I've done throughout Indian country. So that actually greatly benefits your clinic. Because those dollars, when they file their secondary insurance plan, instead of having to write off those deductibles for people that have insurance, you actually get that back as a third-party billing. And that third-party billing, when you bill the insurance, your own insurance, basically you're paying from one bank account over, it's managed, and then your clinic gets a check for the third-party out-of-pocket dollars. So to me, one of the things that strikes me six years later is that it's one of the best ways I've ever seen Native Americans take true to harness their sovereignty and to harness their self-reliance. Because we always talk about we're going to do things, but rarely do I see many of the tribes do something about it. And so what I've, as I've watched you guys over the last few years, actually, I've really been impressed with, especially this new body, is I can tell you guys want to do the right thing, in my opinion. I know that that's hard to say from just reading things, but you can kind of tell after you start meeting in different places. And everybody on this committee is very well-educated and knows their people. And I love the passion that I've got, just meeting you just when I was here. And I've known a few of you before. And those are the, that's one of the reasons that I wanted to come to you next because I think you guys can be a bright shiny star in all of Oklahoma and all of Indian country. And the, and in both ways. Because your people that do not live in this area will not only have the services that you have, but they will be able to go to their local doctors through networks that we provide. They will go to their, they'll be able to choose local hospitals where they already are at. Rather than having to try to go to nobody in the clinic or wait for six months to go to the doctor when they have something that's going on. Because what we have, literally the happening in Indian country, is people not going to doctors because they don't have the money. So they end up dying or they end up getting worse, they end up losing limbs, they end up getting pneumonias, they end up getting things that if, quite frankly, we weren't Native American, we wouldn't be getting. So when we talk about things about how our health is so much worse, I refuse to believe that it's just because of our DNA. What I see a lot of, a lot of it is the environment that we've created, that we were put into, we didn't really create it, and we're doing our best to drag ourselves out of it. And I think it's this generation that can create what we're doing right here. The two thousand dollar plan, what, essentially how it works is everybody gets an insurance card in the plan. It levelizes the plan so from the oldest to the youngest, everyone gets the same benefit until they become whatever you declare as your elder. Elders don't have any kind of internal limit on dental, vision, medical. And some people ask me why that is. That's because when you become sixty-five, Medicare starts paying most of the other expenses that you wouldn't already need. So you start using, for example, most people do not realize that Medicare doesn't cover anything for hearing aids. It don't cover anything for many of the visual disturbances, many of the things for dizziness and different things that are associated with the elderly, the durable medical equipment, people who get wheelchairs, those kind of things. They're having to get the lowest quality one on Medicare whenever they could actually get one that would work a lot better for them. So there's so many different ways these plans can be used. And it's one, it's a way that puts everything together. And it takes care of social services, making sure that, you know, if you were going to do a reimbursement plan or if you already had something like that, it would take care of something like that. As well as it would take care of those people who are from out of areas. That, I don't know this for sure, but I've never been to a tribe yet that have, that I've not heard tribal members tell me that they feel left out because they're not right there on the, on their jurisdictional district. And the truth is, is we can't all live where our tribe is because our jobs take us places, our spouses take us different places. So I think it's very unfair that we have to lower services for people that live away. But this is a way to stabilize them. Because everybody in the whole tribe is offered the same thing. It's not a matter of them signing up, it's a matter of they get it because of their heritage. And as people are born, we do it based on the enrollment. So the enrollment staff lets us know and that's how, that's how people are enrolled. Cards are sent out, we give them an explanation of how it works. The doctors themselves file the claims, not the patient. So instead of going to the doctor and paying for it and reimbursing it and having it sent back, the doctors send it directly to us and we file it and we work the networks and we get the lowest price for them from that. That's why, one of, I did a presentation one time and somebody said, well, if you take five thousand dollars times four thousand tribal members, you'd be in such high millions that we'd never be able to pay for this. Well, ask yourself, why does Blue Cross can charge three hundred dollars a month for millions of people across the country? And they have unlimited amounts. It's because when you have high numbers, it's just basically the law or the study of how numbers work. So whenever, whenever you look at this, it is not a, every person, every single person uses two thousand dollars. About twenty percent of your population will use about eighty percent of your benefit. That's how every insurance plan works. You, I mean, people ask, how do insurance companies make money? That's how. But the difference is, Blue Cross, if they were doing this plan, or I can't say first, let me, let me recant that part. If a insurance company, well, I have nothing against Blue Cross because I use them for my own insurance, my primary. But if you were using an insurance company that you weren't self-funding yourself, you would lose the control of what you can do. You can cover holistic medications, you can cover things that other insurance companies won't. All it has to be is approved by the FDA. So the, there's a tremendous amount of things in there. We write the plan documents, we make sure that you're compliant with the federal government. I've actually worked with Angela on several different programs in the past on health. And she can probably vouch for the fact that I do this a lot in different areas and different ways. I think we've probably worked more on contracting things before. But I really do get out there and I'm very passionate about this. To me, it's not just about the money, to me it's about really changing the lives of our people so that our younger generation lives longer than our older generation, and every generation lives longer. So I don't, I don't really want to go too far into the proposal because I want to take your questions, because I don't know enough about how your social services work to tell you what my recommendation would be for the best. But I think, but these are real numbers based on what we know right now. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. What do you mean by end-of-life expense?
Well, if you call it life insurance, then you have to pay a two million dollar reserve to the state of Oklahoma. And you also have to put the settlement. It's basically, it's similar to life insurance, but instead of just covering, it's when someone passes. So that is paid as part of the, we call it end-of-life because more than just, it's not just paid to a beneficiary. The first, the first rule is that the funeral gets paid for. The next thing that gets paid for is to make sure that all of the pieces of the, for example, we have a three-day death period and it costs two or three thousand. I have twenty-seven hundred relatives in my tribe. So if someone dies in my family, it's nothing for five hundred to a thousand people to show up for a funeral. We're expected to feed them, we're expected to feed them three times a day, have a midnight meeting, a meal, we're expected to have a wake, we're expected to have all those things. All those things are expected. And at one of the worst times in a person's life, they have a huge financial burden. So that end-of-life expense covers those things. And another thing it does is it gets you credibility with your funeral homes and it also helps, we have people to make sure that people are not being taken advantage by those funeral homes. Not to say that you have any of that going on, but I have had to deal with it. An example was a tribe in California, one of our own tribal members was charging someone thirteen thousand dollars for the casket, literally. That was worth, I think you buy it outright wholesale for eight hundred dollars. So the average that they mark those up is about a thousand percent. So people don't realize how literally inflated these costs are. And so me not having the emotional attachment, it's much easier for me to speak to them and say, listen, I'd like to see the invoice of the actual casket so that I can, so that I can work to make sure that, because we pay, you know, we usually will work and say, you know, we're going to pay a hundred and thirty-five percent of the cost of the casket, those types of things. So over time, it's saving you a tremendous amount. I'll give you an example, my tribe is going to spend the longest running on this one. Our funerals used to average around thirteen thousand dollars per person. They're now averaging around eight over six years. So that's because things are being actually looked at. People don't realize they're being charged nine hundred dollars to drive their car for three minutes. And it's just really silly stuff. And I try to make sure, usually you don't have to deal with the funeral home more than once, once they know someone is watching. And I'm not saying they're all like that either. Another thing the end-of-life expense covers is hospice and different types of, different types of things within, I'm a big believer in the spiritual side of what happens when we die. And so many times, the family gets left out of this process. And many people do not want to die in the hospital, they want to die at home. They want to die with dignity and have their family with them. And the hospice and the different types of things like that is not covered under any plan. And sometimes it's limited to the point that hospice can come for the last day and a half, you know. This hospice really is supposed to be a nine-month program. It's not supposed to be the nine months, your last nine months of life. So that's, and there's a lot of other things within there. But the true reality of whatever is, there's two ways to do it. How we did it in this one is that the person, if they don't use all their money, they just assign a beneficiary, and the beneficiary is the one, the difference between that. Usually it's only like five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars. But some people have like big life insurance policies to pay for everything. And then they don't want to, they don't want to feel like they're left out of getting any kind of death benefit. Great question.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
For, on this card that you are putting forth for my tribe to consider, say twice if the person already has insurance that covers it. Now would this card that my tribe gives me, would that override the personal insurance coverage? Or would a doctor bill just might, if I let three doctors say it also, and I've forgiven my insurance card from my tribe, even though I had another card. card from my tribe, even though I have another card, would, would they bill my tribe, would my tribe take care of what they need and the doctor would not have to bill the other insurance, is that correct?
Well, no. Well, I think you're along the right track. What would happen is if you had a primary insurance, that would always be first. And then that way your tribe's not paying the, like, if you have Blue Cross right there or one of those types of plans, you pay that first. But after that doctor has billed them, you're, right when you register, like, let's say, I just went, I just took my son, he broke his arm about two months ago, I just took him to the doctor. So I handed them my EDN card, which is what we had last year, as what, and I said, "This is my primary insurance. My secondary insurance is Native Care Health." And they already knew what it was, they took it because we've, we've been doing this for a long time. So Native Care Health is the, is the name, is the name of the company that, the other company that I own that actually runs the administration.
Well, nobody gives any first with that, kind of a hearing group, but, so they, they'd be able to Medicare first?
Okay, okay, so you're talking to Medicare.
No, 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 she has, she has two, like, she's got a primary, like, and now a secondary, and then Medicare, and then this.
Okay. Yeah, this would always be the third. So this is, this is always the last one they bill. Yeah. Because you always want to take advantage of the other resources first. So after those are exhausted, then you would, then they would, then they would bill Native Care. So if you have Medicare, if you have a primary insurance, then you have Medicare, then you have another insurance, they would bill that, they would bill it third, if there was any balance remaining. And in, and in that situation, one of the things you'll find very quickly is, for example, you would have your Medicare deductible that comes up every 60 days. So you have your pri, you have your primaries deductible and that's going to flow right over, let's say your primaries deductible's $1,000 just raising numbers. That's going to flow right over to your Medicare, when they bill Medicare, they do that as soon as they get the response from the first insurance. That $1,000, if you didn't have a plan like this, would be billed to, to you directly unless you had a supplement to your insurance. And this would be the third for that. So for, for elders, that's why we, that's why we always, that's what I was talking about, like, there's internal limits for people that are under whatever your elder age is. But after you're, after whatever your tribe declares as an elder, there's no limit of how you can use the money. So most people who are elders use their money for dental, vision, durable medical equipment, they use things that Medicare does not cover. For example, hearing aids. Hearing aids is a huge one. I mean, people don't realize that hearing aids cost $3,000 to $4,000 now. It's a huge cost. And there, some of them can range as high as $10,000 before the deductibles, before, before they're actually negotiated down to a correct price. So, so that's how that, that's how that would work. And one of the, one of the really good things from your standpoint in that situation is that your primary insurance would, let's say, for example, you had, you were taking five medications. I, I take five meds a month because I have diabetes and I have low pressure, which is like most Native Americans. And I had, I had diabetes and had low pressure when I was 180 pounds. I'm, I've lost 42 pounds, so I'm, I'm still charging, charging ahead. So I've got 100 more to go, which sounds like a, a million miles, but we'll get there. The primary insurance for me, when I, my primary insurance, I have like $170 in copays that I owe every month. That automatically gets billed to my secondary right there at my pharmacy. So instead of me having to pay the 170, it comes directly from my secondary insurance, which is covered by the local tribe. That's what, that's what, that's the beauty of what these types of plans do. It saves people from having to spend their money and then have to be reimbursed. And, and instead of getting the last or the most expensive price, you're getting the best price. You're getting the price that you should be getting all along. You should be getting the price that's been negotiated. Because you shouldn't be paying, if, if this, if 15 providers are, are providing a surgery for $20,000 and they charge you and they'll take $2,000 from Blue Cross, why is it that your insurance should have to pay the full $20,000 or $15,000 or $10,000? So what this does is it combines it with a network that narrows that plan, it levels it. And so instead of having to pay for that same surgery, combining it with a network, which is a contract between the hospitals, the doctors, and Native Care, they actually have to abide by those same contracts, just like Blue Cross has to with the hospitals or EDN or any of the other large insurance companies. So great question.
Well, looking at your $2,000 option, the 41479 premium per tribal member, is that just a one-time amount per year or is that a month?
That's, no, that's per year.
Per year.
Yeah, and, and if, you know, under the, under the assumptions, it'll, it actually will say 41479 average for every tribal member per year.
And is that with the assumption that, that's only, they would only be allowed to use up to $2,000, but?
Yeah.
Or what if they have, what if they have a, a health limitation or something that happens and it costs over $2,000, how does that?
What we do is, one of the, one of the provisions within the policy is, there's typically either a health board or tribal council themselves, once a month in private session, there's usually not more, like, our, my tribe has 5,800 people, 5,800 living people that are unemployed. And there's never more than about 10 appeals, we call them appeals, and they only do that if they have to go over their limit or if they need to go, like, say, for example, it's going to cover 400 for dental and they need 600. Well, that's, those are rules that would be decided on a case-by-case basis. And it seems cumbersome, but it's not. I can tell you, I go to the business committee every month and I present those. At the other tribes, I send them an electronic copy of the letter and the, then what we do is we investigate what they're saying to make sure that, we have, unfortunately, we always have to take the side of, we have to investigate to make sure that the pricing is correct, that everything that they're telling us is true before we present it to the tribal council.
Okay, and with this same option, they would also give the end-of-life benefit as well, or per tribal member?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the reason we gave you that average was because I don't think people realize how cost-effective it is. If you think about spending $414 a year on a tribal member, that's what the average is out for that $2,000 part. The biggest, the, that covers most of the out-of-pocket expenses that those people cannot get through. The worst month of the year is January because people spend so much in Christmas. And that's typically when their biggest bills start coming. February and March, and they end up spending their entire tax refund, which we also don't know how that's going to work with the new administration. So we have, we have to think about those things, but I can, I can tell you whether I like having the peace of mind knowing whoever's president or whoever's the administrator of these types of things, that my people are covered. You know, that they have an option. And to me, I look at that insurance card like a key that opens the door to a doctor's office. Because I can tell you from personal experience that people will tell you that it's illegal for you not to take people who do not have health insurance. That's technically true, but it is not legal, it is not illegal to schedule people out at whatever your policy says. And that's what many, many doctors in the country do. A preponderance of doctors will put, based on your insurance class, will schedule you out for it. And I'm not accusing anyone here or anyone in this area of doing that, but I can tell you firsthand that it happens and it happens in Oklahoma a lot.
How do, how do you all deal with tribal members that maybe are eligible for other insurance that's available and have, I mean, do you just, is there any provisions in regards to having them apply for the other, and this became a last resort?
You can actually, one of the really nice things that we like to do, we always try to convince the tribal councils to make this a rule, that before they're actually put on the planning, that one of the first things we do is send out the cards, but they're not effective officially until they have applied for, they can, you know, if, if they've applied for Medicare, if they're eligible. They have to do an eligibility test, those types of things. And we teach them how to do that. You'll, you'll, like, here's an example. One of the things that is required is that if you work in an employer that pays 100% of your, of your health insurance, then you, then you're required to take that health insurance because it's going to help lower the cost of the plan and actually extend the dollars. So yes, that's actually an excellent point, but most, there are many, many people who do not realize, I'd say the preponderance of people do not realize that children are eligible for Medicaid. They don't realize they're eligible for other types of subsidy programs, they don't realize sometimes even what's available in the tribe. What I've actually seen in tribes that we've been working with, it actually increases the amount of people that, that live in their area going to their flooding. It increases flooding visits, it increases people going to see their navigators to make sure that they're getting signed up on a, on a plan that might be there for them. Because no matter what happens in the administration, I'm actually working on my speech about what I'm going to talk about if we're, or the, or going to be a chamber of commerce next week, and they want me to speak on the changes that I see coming with the Trump administration. And the same exact thing with all the different places in Indian country, pretty much all of them nationally especially, of what would happen when Obama was, became president. Because it was a bad, the world changed vastly in the health insurance when he became president. There were, there were thousands of regulations that came down very rapidly and we had to keep up with them. The thing, the same exact thing is going to happen. We're ready for it, we're prepared, we're prepared. Not only are we prepared, we've done it before. Terry Harris, who's right here, he's actually the man who wrote the original plans for the third-party administrator, the first third-party administrator of Blue Cross in Oklahoma, wrote many of the networks, unfortunately, sometimes wrote some of the contracts that I have to fight over on a daily basis, but, but sometimes the person who creates something is one of the best ways to know how to negotiate around something. So Terry worked in that industry for a number of years, he's been, he won't, he doesn't like to tell you how many years, but I will tell you that it may be more than I've been a lot. But it may be more than I've been a lot, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And.
My picture.
Yeah, that's, Terry makes a very valid point. This is your money, it never leaves here until you approve it. You don't, you don't write a check for that full amount, you only write a check for what has been spent that week. You pay the, you pay the check runs on a weekly basis. So if there's $25,000 of processed claims for that week that have come in, that's what gets sent in to you and that's what's approved. We have, you have a $0 checking account, somebody moves that money over, you see exactly the claims, you can't see what the claims are for, you can see if they're a valid member and where they went and the dates of service and the dollar, which you cannot see any type of, type of healthcare information beyond that. So to make sure that there's no fraudulent activity going on. You also, you can, you actually have access to make sure, you can assign somebody to be able to go in and look at in real time where checks are, when they've been released. We actually don't even have money come into our office directly on purpose because many of the tribes, I've seen other people throughout the years who try to do things that aren't related to this, that are similar, and tribes accuse them of laundering the money or doing something fraudulent with the money. So I don't even allow the money to come into our office. We use a third-party vendor that combines all of the money, they, they take the money from your account. They, they do the checks and they process them and they send them out directly to the doctors. And they actually are the largest company in the country that does that. They work with CoreSource and every, pretty much every large third-party administrator in the entire country. They know literally tens of millions of people. So that's, that's another safeguard. I wanted to make sure that we were going to do something that was safeguarded from fraud and abuse and any type of, I mean, let's just be real, I mean, we're Native American here, we know that things can be very political. And we know that our politics sometimes divides by our families. I come from one of the largest families in my tribe and I wanted to make sure that I wasn't accused of using the influence that I had of, of doing anything so that I could prove if somebody accused me of stealing money, I could prove that there was no money distilled because it never came to me. It, it was, we sent a paper, we call it a release of the check run. It gets signed off by whoever is over your accounting or whoever you assign, and then we asked that you have two business days to review that. And let's say that you have 1,000 checks on there that need approval, but two of them look really strange to you. You just tell us, we would like to do more investigation on those two checks and we'll release the check run on all of those two checks. And then we'll, then once we've done the investigation, then we put them on the next check run. Yes, ma'am?
Well, the, the purpose of putting RDI Consulting here on our agenda was to get the dialogue going with, with council. I will say this, I heard him speak two, two and a half years ago in, at the Riverwind on Affordable Care. And I was very impressed with all the information that you provided. You made a very clear claim that, that was.
Yeah, I watched, I don't know if you guys watched President Obama's address last night, but I was awarded with the National Native Health Board Award and he, he, because of the QuoPals were the first that really did a self-reliant claim. And so we didn't use an insurance company that already existed, we actually took control of our own monies and did them. So I won that award in 2012. I don't, I don't really, I don't really try to flash awards around, but that's what I'm really proud of because the highest award of the National Native Health Board Award is the Jake White Crowe Award. And Jake, Jake White Crowe is the only other QuoPal who's ever won. So apparently QuoPals are big into health and they always have been, so.
But I know, I know we probably have many more questions.
Absolutely.
If you all can, you know, answer for us and, but that will be for another time.
Okay.
That will be for another time, but we need to get going.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
But I, I know that you have got my interest and our interest and we want to hear more and things. And so many of these folks before and they have been persistent and that's good, that's good, that's what you need. And so we, we thank you for your time and your willingness to come and share these things. Anyone want to take the lead on this with Angela?
Okay. Good.
Reminds you volunteering. That's the way to do things.
Well, thank you so much for your time. No, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
I'm not sure, is it?
Yeah.
Thanks for volunteering, Angela.
You want to?
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll move to item number two, discussion and approval of three-dead size of curragway oil and gas exploration by Caradon Geop physical services.
I guess it's on me to talk about this a little bit. This is, we started getting these letters about a month ago and our tribal citizens are also starting to get these letters from Caradon. They're on behalf of Tarka Energy, which is looking to do seismic exploration of some of our lands. Seismic explorations are basically they put sensors in the ground and then they run what they call lumber trucks, which is kind of vibrating the ground. And from that data, that's what they can tell where the mineral deposits are in the subsurface. When we first started getting these letters, you know, we had a discussion with the president and we, we asked the attorney general to kind of look into it to see if it conflicted with our tractor work for Oklahoma, if these activities were. We also, I reached out to Jeremiah DuKirk, who is the, I'll be, the lead kind of environmental, I don't know, consultant, the one that's doing. I don't know, consultant, the one that's doing this project for Paragon, talked to him about it. And, you know, they explained to us really that the, the motive is to look for oil and gas, don't get it wrong, but it's also to add to the comprehensive seismic study of the entire lands underneath Ponty County because of the intensity of the earthquakes that we have here in Ponty County. So they will be submitting all the data that they could collect to us and to OU and OCU as part of their research to kind of understand where all the fault lines are and how everything interacts before we're be. So we took that into consideration too. The attorney general, I think, when he speaks to that, his opinion basically was that it doesn't really do anything to our fractal moratorium because we didn't really have anything under moratorium calling for, you know, seismic surveys to be done. This, we also took into consideration that Tarka has, has always been a responsible producer within our land. They've always kept us up to date in the loop with everything that they're doing. Whenever they have a spill, they're on top of it and they mitigate that spill. And so, you know, I agree with the attorney general that, you know, we can see the issue with it, with our fractal moratorium and that it probably needs to go to council to see what the council's pleasure was with, you know, whether or not we, we sign these letters approving them to do a seismic study. And again, make no mistake about it, I mean, it's, it's for oil and gas purposes and it will, you know, Tarka will eventually use those, that data to, you know, get leases within the Ponty Nation to, to, to get those energy, or those, those, those out of the ground eventually. But it's also, we have to weigh the fact that Tarka's responsible and, you know, we need, we need those kinds of responsible actors in our jurisdiction and be, the data is going to another good cause, which is to figure out what the heck is causing, I mean, where our, our fault lines are and how they'll interact with each other. They're going to get to USGS, OU, OCU and the Ponty Nation as part of our workers as well. So there's a lot of people out here doing a lot of seismic surveys and this is a big, it's a big chunk of it and so that's all to be taken into consideration if the council's wanting. So that's basically it.
And, and they are paying.
And they are paying. Yeah, I agree with that, yeah. They're paying us. I think total is, it's around 5,000.
Just to do the survey right there.
Yeah.
And it's just on Ponty Nation, traveling on land, not our tribal members. The tribal members had to give permission.
The tribal members had to give permission for that. This is, these are, these are our interests, the lands that we hold interest in. Now, the tribal members are getting letters as well. And in our council, you know, I've had phone calls from them as well asking, it's basically the same thing, you know, it's up to them, but, you know, here's the reasons for it and here's the reasons against it. And it's up to the landowner to decide.
And what type of equipment are they going to be placing on, on the land and what type of land is done?
They, they, it's minimal. It's, it's very minimal. I mean, you'll see crushed grass where the tires, where the thumper trucks go through. But what they do is they put these sensors in the ground, they're only going to the ground about six and a half inches and they grid out an area and then they run a truck that just has a mechanism, a lot of truck that vibrates and sends sound wave through the, through the ground. And, and so they're in and out. You know, there's always concerns when this activity happens from, from people that have cattle and stuff because sometimes gates will get left open and that kind of thing. But Paragon is, is, you know, they, they made it important to say that they're, they're not going to do that kind of stuff. But they don't, they don't have to dig or they don't have to knock anything down to do, do the seismic stuff.
I will say this, that Jeremy Love came from the BIA, came and visited with us on this and so really appreciate that. And they did not want to move or take any action on this without first, without our approval. So I appreciate that. So with that, do we have a motion?
I will make that motion. Can we not open discussion for this?
We'll have a motion and then we'll, we'll...
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
On second.
And we have a second. Okay. So we'll discuss it.
Thank you. Have you had any contact with Bunkie, uh, Kalkon, because I know that you and the law went down for discussion. Those landowners kind of have, have a meeting down there and they don't want any part of this.
And that's, that's up to them.
I understand that. So if they're saying they don't want to be part of it, I mean, why are we even at this?
Sammy, can I ask you know what, why you're objecting to this?
I think he, I, I can't speak to that. Okay.
I, I, I mean, I would just like to know too because I think to me it's, it seems like it's a proactive, but then I worry about the data because data could be manipulated in favor of, of the gas and oil company. And my question would be, is the data going directly to USGS or their, or, or is the company, Tarka, whoever's going to, the, installing the equipment, are they giving the data and then sending it on to USGS?
Paragon is, Paragon is collecting the data, whatever data they get from.
Then they send it on to USGS.
And they send it off.
Okay. So I, I would just like, I would, I'm interested in what their objections are as well.
I would too. Can you speak to that? Mark, can you speak to your conversation with Bunkie about that drilling, that they want to do a seismic survey down there?
Well, firstly, I'm, I'm not in favor. I wasn't sure of getting several letters and I got one from the UCU. And it was, I began saying that if I had signed that I'd take consented, now you're saying that they put a small error in that first letter. They were throwing that out of the way. And they still won't be signed, but I, I talked to Bunkie, I talked to my brother and I, I wasn't, I had mixed feelings and I guess it's my gut feeling, I, I don't want to be bothered, you know, I don't want to want that. And so I talked to Bunkie and Bunkie read the papers and he said he didn't think there was any problem with it, but it was up to my discretion, what I want to do. And I, I guess I'm held a minority because I don't, I don't want it.
But did he also, but did he also tell you he wasn't going to sign this?
Yeah, Bunkie said he wasn't going to sign it either. And then I read all of Bunkie's papers, but then there was $7 for it. Well, no. $7, I think by, we don't forget. Now, this is my first feeling, Bunkie said I could do it if he wasn't going to sign it and, and I swear that, that's what I was feeling also. So I'm just one of the minority and my brother, we're not doing it.
And that's, that's all we're just bringing up to council to discuss on what they want to do.
That's why, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
They're not drilling, they're not drilling?
Yes.
And it says 20 feet deep?
Well, that's just for, but they're not doing any seismic shots or anything. They're not blowing anything up. They're just saying that they're, they're...
20 feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I had talked to others that are supportive of it and so it's kind of proof Bunkie's lying.
Yeah.
So that's why we're not going to have a discussion.
The, the only benefit that I, I see for, for Ponty people is that they're going to turn the data over to the USGS and to OU and OCU. Oftentimes it's these data, data collection, these seismic surveys are, are company proprietary information. They don't share with anybody else so that, you know, other energy companies can't use it to go, you know, get leases or whatnot. But they enter into an agreement where they're going to share this data with us and the USGS, OU and OCU studying to, to look at. Because one thing, when they, when they do this stuff, they not only find oil deposits, but they also, they also tell you a lot about, you know, where fault lines are because they'll see all of them. So that's the only benefit I see. I mean, it's not going to be a decision based upon money because they're not producing anything for, they're just asking, they're just paying for access to land. And so that's the issue.
They're a oil company.
It would, it would be, it would be nice. It would be nice.
If you own the whole property. Well, I mean, this is, we're, we're discussing on behalf of the Ponty Nation, our land here and that's what you're asking us.
Yes, exactly.
Do you have a disclaimer in mind? Is somebody else signing or they not, not?
I, I keep hearing, I keep hearing majority landowners and I don't know if that's 50% plus one. I, I, I don't know. Because I've, I've never seen the actual policy language that the BIA uses for that kind of thing.
Again, and Andrew, maybe you can help me on this part. You know, we have this lawsuit that, that we have and I, I try to look at these things and I was kind of thinking, you know, why this is being discussed, you know, I would hate for anybody to misconstrue if we agreed to this, you know, to make it, make it look like, you know, any of these guys, how lawsuit we get, they're still doing this, you know, but I know a lot of the, you know, people don't understand the whole process and how it works. You know, myself, I still don't, you know, I already do I. But I hate for people to say, well, they're, they're against this or they don't like this to get their, allowing this or for this and, and, so I kind of wonder, you know, you know, we're, we're here to make decisions for the, for the best, you know, benefit of our Ponty Nation and stuff, but at the same time too, you know, I think, I hate to, you know, have the general public look at it too as like, kind of being hypocritical.
Well, that's why it's, it's, you're, it's your own decision as a council because, you know, you have to weigh those, those, those factors. I mean, my, my recommendation, or my, my counsel is when the president, when he asked me when we started these letters was basically what I just said to you all as a council, which is we have to weigh all of this, you know. Technically, we're not suing the, any energy company.
Yeah.
The BIA, you know, and that's a separate thing. But this will lead to more oil development. You know, once the price of oil goes up, if they find oil there in the seismic surveys, there are going to be more leases coming through. But we also have to weigh the fact that, you know, part of our stance as a nation and the place that we articulated to the public was that we're not eating oil and gas, that we're looking for responsible energy producers. And, and Tarka's been pretty damn responsible in my book because I've always gotten, even when I was a tipple, we've got consultation letters from them. They have a good working relationship with Ponty and so you got to weigh that in as well. But all of those factors have to be weighed in before you make a decision on whether or not to petition business.
And, and I agree, you know, and, you know, like we was talking about yesterday, we don't want to say that we're against anything, you know, like that, you know, but it's just trying to understand, you know, and, and isn't everybody as a coun, council that's kicking the land I have?
But here's, here's what, what I see coming, what I see coming is, is under this new administration, that whether we, we like it or not, there's going to be a big push for oil and gas. That's what Trump's not pushed for in his administration. That's why he's getting the people that he's getting and putting them in these kind of positions to, to open up and, and to get the, the sources, the resources that are there. And, and we have, we have stated from the very beginning that we are not anti-oil and gas, that we are, you know, just looking for those responsible producers who will come on our Indian land and, and, you know, get the resources in a good way, you know, and pay for things in a good way and do things in a good way. And, and, you know, as, as been, has been stated that Andrew and Monty and different ones, that AG, that, that they have said that Tarka is a good agent for us and has been. And I believe they're the ones that has the one back here. Yeah, they have this oil one right back here and they don't do the horizontal fracking. They don't, they don't do...
They have just a vertical.
They just do the vertical, you know, so, so, and that's good. You know, that's, that's, that's a good sound way of, of doing business. And so the, the opinion, and I ask for their opinion because I, I didn't know because they said, well, you need to sign these. You know, I, I'm not signing this, I tell it, bring it to council, but, but as we bring it to council, you know, we need to have a, an opinion. And so the opinion from, from the folks over here is that it doesn't hurt us, you know, but, but there's that perception. But I, I also think it, to me, it states, it states that the Ponty Nation isn't anti-oil and gas and that the Ponty Nation is looking for responsible producers and will support responsible producers on our Indian land who come in and do things in a good way. And so I think that, that Tarka has demonstrated that according to the folks that we have on board on this. And so, you know, and these are the, the questions that, that our tribal members have. You know, they're, they're getting, they're getting the letters and, you know, there's dollar amounts, well, we're going to pay you this much for, for, you know, to come on and do this stuff. And so I, I've received those same letters, you know. So, yes.
I was, I was really hopeful that maybe through this and you could find out more about the earthquake. That was, was my first pick on it when I, when I first began reading it and, you know, just to find out or, I mean, you have, you know, there are all kinds of computers. I don't know about anybody else, but it's scary to me that, you know, we're the, we're the main earthquake center in, in Ponty, America. So with that, you know, I, I was thinking, I thought that that's what, you know, if I found out more about earthquakes, I didn't know that there was the oil and gas, you know, finding out about home pockets. But it's just here, you know, this decision, we're going to make, that is going to be about, you know, this arch of land here. But I'm, you know, if, if that's going to be a part of it, is, is that part of it? Is that we'll be able to find out the fault lines? Because, you know, just me and my son were talking about even buying a home and he's like, I don't want to buy a home in Ponty. See that big, big mall comes out and we're all gone. He's like, there goes my home, you know, so he's like, no, I ain't buying, you know, so just things like that, you know, we were having earthquakes, it was scary and if we could find, you know, any kind of information out to, to give anybody some peace of mind or, you know, even some, some, you know, answers to questions, then, you know, if this is going to help to provide that, then, you know, I would like to know my cow, you know, just for that reason. So because, you know, even if they find out first, you know, that's further down the line with another DCA or, or drill oil. This is just about type of land, right here for the Ponty Nation type of land. And of course, the Indian will remember that, you know, that's what I would have, my basic need was to help us find out, get more information about earthquakes that are happening and how they're really affecting Ponty Nation. And I would, I would like to get that information.
President Pat, excuse me, the letter here, as it reads, your couple letters says, our goal is to provide research data and oil production. And we're going to collect this data and share it with the USGS, OGHS and OCC and sharing this information with these agencies will be able to determine whether problematic areas are concerned with. I mean, that's all I'm good, I don't know where, you know, where the fault lines are going to help us. You know, if I just read all the like, I would probably venture to say that I will go with it.
Yeah.
If, if we don't, if we say we don't give them the authorization to do that, what, how does that affect them? They, they just don't come in here and they won't know where the oil and gas is? Or will they still be able to come in and do it anyway?
Well, on, on the lands that we have, that we own the whole share, they won't be able to do their survey. The lands that we're just a percentage ownership of, which are a lot of them as well, is all... The lands that we're just a percentage ownership of, which are a lot as well, if all of them get fifty plus one, they'll, they'll be able to get the seismic survey. But if everybody says no in Pawnee, then, then they won't be able to do it. But, you know, they might find another way of doing it, but, you know, that's, that's a risk as well.
And it's all through speech, isn't it?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's generally, it's, it's the sections that we're looking at, it's kind of like, right, south of 412, this kind of, this big piece space between Yale and Burnac.
So it doesn't go south to the, to the, to the...
I don't think it does.
Okay, so there's no...
But the only drilling, the only drilling is so they can, areas where they can't bring trucks in, and not really have to. But Jeremy has already told us in the meeting that we had with him, that, you know, part of the restrictions are they can't do any shots, meaning they can't throw any dynamite down a hole, it exploded, so it's all going to be doing with the fiber trucks.
Oh, oh, but, you know, uh, you know, we want, we want to have this good work, like a great company, you know, like, like stated, you know, we're not against it, you know? And, and, and is there, is this easy to be done in a kind of, is there a timeframe that this needs to be decided on?
I think some will do, some are running up, but not, not all of it, they're, they're staggered, but, like, is it the week, or the month, or...
I think it was this week, too.
Well, you know, I was just thinking, you know, if, if these, you know, guys wanted to have that information, and, and as we want to work with it, in, in a good way, then being very much involved, you know, why couldn't I just come down here and talk with them? Any questions? I, I talked with Mr. Newkirk yesterday, and, because there was time to schedule a meeting, the earliest that they could meet was, uh, next week sometime, to come down here and, and meet with you all. But I had told them that this was already on the council agenda, and that we're going to discuss this, and should the council have any, any questions, it would be more than, we'd be more than willing to have them down. So they, they've already, they've already made that offer, okay? It's just that they couldn't get anybody here today, like, you know, myself, I just think that, uh, if we want that, you know, and I'm sure we all have questions, and have some thoughts, and maybe have to hear what they have to say, so they can help reassure us, you know, the things that they're doing, and maybe help us to understand more about the procedures of what they're going to do. And then we can ask them these questions, well, you know, what do you, what you guys benefit out of this? You know, what, what's going to happen to that data, you know, specifically? And, and I think that would be, you know, official to us as, as a council, so we could have a better understanding of what it is we're trying to decide on, if we want to be proactive, you know, about our lands, you know, and be, uh, better aware of what's going on. Myself, that's, that's a thought that I, I have, you know? And I, I'd be willing to entertain that, you know, uh, you know, if they do want to come here, you know, next week. One, one, one thing that won't happen, won't be turned over to anybody else, that's going to stay with Tarka. And, and, you know, my, my thinking is maybe if Tarka does just the, the vertical drilling, uh, they don't do that horizontal fracking, that, that maybe they're just trying to leverage, you know, their, their way into the federal regulators around here as well.
And, and maybe that too, you know, and, and if, if you're saying, I mean, they've been real, you know, good tests, and, you know, they have taken care of it, then maybe that's a beginning for our, uh, partnership here, where we could sit down face to face and say, hey, you know, we, we value our, our lands, and, and we want you to do the same thing, because the thing is, is that, and I said this yesterday, is that there's people who are all around, they're, they'll do here, this is our land, you know, so whatever damage they do, you know, they still live out of state somewhere, but we have to deal with whatever, you know, happens, you know? So I, myself, counsel, you know, I'd be willing to come next, next week and meet, if, if you guys would want to, you know, to meet with these guys and talk with them, you know, to get a better understanding of, of, you know, what they're doing.
President Pat, I would also add that you might, um, you might want just to put on the, the fundamentals that are being affected as well. There's a lot of questions out there. They're very, they're very, you might as well open it up for, you know, the authorities that, that are there, you know, maybe give them a understanding of what, what really is happening.
Sure.
I, I totally agree, and the whole part is educating, you know, so I, I feel they're to give their understanding, especially here from the mouth, and see them face to face, you know, who will work with them.
Well, I'm wondering if we can go ahead and vote on it? Can you invite them to whether it was?
I make motion to be table. How often do you want them to be?
So we have a, a motion in second.
Oh, okay.
So listen, we'll deal with that.
Motion, that's the name of it. I'm going to give the motion to the, to the special room.
And so we can, we can call for the vote on that, and then, and then whatever the vote did, you can, you can vote. All right. So call, call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
No.
Sammy Anderson?
No.
Donna Hare?
No.
Adrian Spatter?
No.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right, so we are not approving these seismic surveys, and we then have, well, should we just put on a business, right? Just go to a business?
No, you can make those off the agenda.
Okay.
Make a log of it.
All right.
We go off the agenda, but we can say we want to create a, a meeting and give that information and get rid of that.
Okay. All right. So it goes on.
Why don't we vote it on?
So Amy, you're, you're in contact with, uh, Tarka? I'm, I'm in contact with Paradigm, they're, they're the environmental consulting firm, like, with seismic. Just see if they can set it for me. Sure. And, and see if it's possible. And as soon as we find out, then we'll send out the information to the tribe. Okay. We'll vote on that.
Now, now, if they had it scheduled for next week, is that going to be enough time to send a notice out to all of those, uh, members that...
Well, I, I just, the, the conversation yesterday was, the earliest they could get things together would be next week, and that's why, you know, we needed to bring the report council anyway. Uh, but I will talk with them, and, and, and we'll see, we'll see what we can do together. Okay. All right.
I just have a procedural question.
Yes.
A part of a procedural question. Why can't a vote to table not be taken? Why can't we just introduce a new motion? Because I, I'm concerned that if the minutes we, we voted no, then with any question, is why you want that? And I, and I have seen, uh, this body, um, vote motion down, and then introduce a new motion, and I think that's been, uh, aligned with part of the, 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 the rubber drill coming to this general dialogue.
I was under the understanding that what it was going to be.
That's what I thought. The whole, the whole, the table is, she should have, she should have just voted no and then made the new motion. But she voted yes, right?
Yeah, I'm listening to that. She, she did that herself. All right, so we can, uh, bring it back? Just bring it back?
Well, the minute we're direct that we're going to bring it back, you know, right, we're going to discuss, I might first, uh, who has picked up each of them.
So, Doc, what's...
Should Doc want to make a motion to table? Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and do it.
I'll make the motion today.
Sorry. So a motion, the second to table, this, uh, item number two, call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
I'm going to abstain, because I don't know what the rule is, I don't think, I don't think it's, right, but we can, we already voted on it, but it tells me, no, I'm just going to abstain.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatter?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right. Item number two is table, and it'll stay on the agenda. Okay. Let's move to item number three, approval of letter of support from Pawnee Nation College for grant submission. And he had discussed this briefly in his report this morning, and this is for the National Endowment for, for the humanities. And, uh, all they're asking for is a letter of support, favor support in their effort for this grant submission.
I make a motion to approve the letter of support for the college grant submission.
Angela makes that motion, is there a second?
I said that.
We have a motion and a second. Donna?
I'm sorry.
And he had brought this up at the last council meeting. And so we are entertaining now. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
They're asking us to put the poll in, you know, they want to...
Doc, the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatter?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Um, I would really like to hear more information on the grant, I might have seen it before I, um, give my approval.
All right, so let us approve, letter of support. He gave us a sample of letter of approval. Yeah, pretty much, pretty much anything. Let's move on to item number four, and Angela, uh, budget committee recommendation. A approval resolution seventeen oh one, Salazar Corporation for fifteen thousand dollars.
Is that not in my packet? I don't see it. I didn't get it.
Harrison, uh, I sent the budget, I sent the budget location.
But I don't see the, uh, the resolution I have in my packet, it says Jan, July, January twenty sixteen. Resolution number sixteen seventy.
It's seventeen oh one, seventeen oh one, resolution.
Um, also, the, the approval of the resolution also has a budget, that module sent attached to it, that needs to be approved as well, it's not on it.
On the budget law?
Yeah, can we just add it to that, that approval of the resolution, that we have a budget law?
Yes.
And, um, while the way, can you explain? Yes, what this is, is we received a request from a tribal member for, um, graduate expenses to help assist us, provide assistance for graduate degree program. And so, uh, in discussing that whole issue, we decided to, that budget committee, uh, which there was like one, two, three, four other council members there at the time, who also weighed in on this to, um, identify Salazar dollars, we had already, um, appropriated, a pre-discount, already appropriated graduate degree expenses from Salazar Settlement for that purpose, however they've been depleted, and, and promoting, um, education and our support for education, that we felt that to also assist this tribal member to also appropriate the unappropriated dollars of fifteen thousand and add it to the Salazar original appropriation, so against the budget law. So we're adding fifteen thousand dollars by budget law to the education program for graduate degree students. And so, um, in all that discussion, we could have just assisted this one tribal member, but we felt, felt that there's other tribal members out there, let's just cap it at ten, at the amount of fifteen hundred per...
Stop. Oh, sorry. Never mind.
Yeah, at fifteen hundred dollars per tribal member, uh, for ten, for ten individuals. And so that's what we're doing today, and it didn't come out, so, can you just read it, or somebody read it?
I'm still on. You have a ready question? Did you see? Oh, you have all of them. Is anybody... I have, I want to have this, the, uh, let me see, that you have. Um, I have a question, I would just talk and value, so just, do we advertise this, um, throughout our higher education? We're going to, um, we just met last week, and that's why it's in the, so we'd like to get the approval, once they get the approval and the budget in, then we'll start advertising. But we do have a deadline for one, we have to get, the reason, one reason why we're rushing through is they have to have the money to the college by the twenty first, or their, um, yeah. Yeah, I don't want us to get good at that, you know, getting, you know, not stressing students out.
Agreed.
Exactly, and I think we're all getting there, I can see that, we are, we are, yeah. You don't have, you can't read this without a motion, please, on the floor there, and basically, just like a, a regular appropriation of that fifteen thousand, or, and it does that graduate program. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I make a motion to approve resolution seventeen oh one for Salazar appropriation of fifteen thousand, including budget law number one, and the knowledge to the education budget. I say that.
Okay, we have a motion by Angela, send it to my, and, for this, uh, resolution. Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatter?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay, let's approve, who to item, the approval of American Indian Chamber of Commerce membership, and it's three hundred dollars.
Budget committee recommends approval of American Indian Chamber of Commerce membership in the, in the amount of three hundred dollars. Also, part of that discussion was that we would identify somebody, one or two individuals who would be tasked or primary for this, um, Chamber of Commerce to attend and report back to us. So, um, I make that motion for, for that. I have a second.
Angela makes motion, please, and a second. Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spatter?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right, so you want to be one of the two, let me know. Let's move to item number C, approval of twenty sixteen Property Management Budget Modification Number Three.
Okay, uh, budget committee reviewed, um, the Property Management Budget Modification Number Three. In the amount of, uh, ten thousand six hundred and seventy dollars to pay for health insurance, and I make that motion to approve.
Excuse me, can I talk?
Yes.
But you're adding, um, money into the salary of the company as well, right?
It's just into, we're moving money from, uh, uh, another indirect cost budget, which is the Pawnee budget, into, into the property management to cover health expenses.
For twenty six seventy.
Yes. If you'll see, if you'll see on the health insurance memo line item, the total cost was sixteen thousand six eighty five to cover the employee level two. But they, so they had to reduce and take their other savings for the balance, and that's why it's only ten thousand, which would affect the other from another indirect cost budget. Is that, is that all that is? Okay.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, do you have a second, please? Do you have a second? Call for the vote.
Oh, no, they had opted out, when they created their original budget, there was employees who had opted out of it and now they're on it, and so we have to.
Oh, I. Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Harris?
Yes.
Adrian Spargo?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Alright, item number C is approved. We move to item number D, approval of resolution seventeen oh two, revisions to fiscal policies and procedures, appendix A, procurement.
Uh, budget committee reviewed the, uh, fiscal policies revision and recommends approval, I make that motion.
Motion is made, there's a second. Adrian, seconds. Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Harris?
Yes.
Adrian Spargo, chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Alright, that is approved. We move to item number E, approval of resolution seventeen oh three, revisions to fiscal policies and procedures, appendix L, records management.
Budget committee reviewed the fiscal policies revision and recommends approval by resolution number seventeen oh three, I make that motion.
Motion by Angela, seconded by Adrian. Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Harris?
Yes.
Adrian Spargo, chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Item number E is approved. We'll move to item number F, approval of IHS housekeeping twenty sixteen budget modification number one.
Um, budget committee reviewed the IHS housekeeping twenty sixteen budget law number one, which was to include, um, carryover dollars into their current operating budget and in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. And I make that motion to approve.
Vote, motion. Second. Leanna, seconds. Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Harris?
Yes.
Adrian Spargo, chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Item F is approved. We move to item G, approval of purchase over five thousand dollars for IHS housekeeping of a tractor at twenty-one thousand.
Uh, budget committee reviewed this, uh, request for purchase over five thousand. They reviewed the last carryover dollars that just approved in the budget law to purchase this. And budget committee recommends approval. I make that motion. I'll second.
Motion is made, seconded by Leanna. Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Harris?
Yes.
Adrian Spargo, chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Alright, item G is approved. We move to item H, approval of purchase over five thousand for lawn management for laptops at nine thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars per horse stance.
This is a request for purchase over five thousand dollars. Budget committee reviewed, the money is in their current budget in the amount of nine thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars to purchase laptops, mobile laptops for their vehicles, yes. Uh, budget committee recommends approval, I make that motion. I'll second.
Motion by Angela, seconded by Leanna. Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Harris?
Yes.
Adrian Spargo, chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a comment, just so, um, I know council by, uh, the new procurement procedure, um, that we are increasing that five thousand dollar to fifty thousand so that, so you all are aware that one more five thousand dollar expenditures will be coming to council. We set the threshold at fifty, so that will be some of our agenda items to streamline that for the agency. Thank you.
Alright. We are moved to item number five, true new business, approval of resolution seventeen oh four, health education contract, IHS.
Oh, all it is, I, IHS is changing the format. So, uh, they gave us new contract number for our FA and our school program. Uh, we want to probably, uh, the resolution inclusive to the daughter. Once they receive that, then they will, uh, produce the funds. So that's, we're just following those procedures.
I'll make that motion to, uh, resolution seventeen oh four.
Don't make the motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Leanna, seconds. Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Harris?
Yes.
Adrian Spargo, chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Alright, move to, that is approved, item number five is approved. Move to item number six, approval of resolution seventeen oh five, community health service contract with IHS. Second. Same thing. The contract. Another contract.
Motion to approve, resolution seventeen oh five.
Motion is made by Donna, second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Amy, second? I didn't say anything. Call for the vote.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Harris?
Yes.
Adrian Spargo, chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Alright, uh, that takes care of the business. We will move to item number fourteen, which is open forum.
Professor, I, I did ask you if you recall, um, in the fall, early fall, to, to handle the, uh, on any services activities selection process and what have you. At my last council meeting, there were open forum, I asked for a budget. I, I, I didn't know how much money we're, we're talking about, that we'll be funding, that princess allocation. And I say this because there's gonna be expenses, right? She's gonna have that, she's gonna have a show, she's gonna have a clown. We have to have money to have the event. And I need to be able to select, um, you know, members to join me. So that's kind of what I wanted to, at this, Angela, please.
Well, I would just need a request from you to develop a budget, so that the budget committee.
Develop my own budget?
Okay. Do it, develop it, and I'll go with that. And, and I've seen, uh, the dollars are available, and we're gonna have a budget.
Alright, I appreciate that. I wanted to, I wanted to share with each of you, um, the application process that's gonna go down. And I'll just, uh, pass these down to each of you. And, uh, I'll take this to you, Adrian. Adrian has, uh, is, is going to be sitting with me on this. Um, we're wanting to do this in the springtime of our Pawnee New Year. And, uh, can you, we want to do it in the springtime? Um, during our Pawnee New Year. So I will, I will coordinate with Darryl Wildcat, see if he's got some available time, um, Memorial Day and our dance Memorial Day, to actually have, uh, you know, uh, the announcement for camp. So this is just a rough, I mean, I, I, I want to pull my committee together and I wasn't sure how you wanted to operate. But if I just have to design a budget, I'm gonna do that. Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
This, uh, young gentleman right back here, he's been here, of course, he's been here for a while and I've been wanting to know if he had something that he needed to address to us or if he's trying to find somebody, you know.
I will introduce him. He is a tribal member. We have known each other for, you know him, don't you, Harrison?
Yes.
Yes, he's from Cleveland. My husband coached his son years ago. He's, uh, Kenny Templeton. He's from, oh, come on up, Kenny. He's from the Roberts family. You can explain your, your lineage? You always wanted to know the lineage. He owned a car today.
I just think he's walking around with papers and I'm like, he might be looking for it in another office. I was listening to, you know, about the, I've been in Old Hill for, for years, you know. Been in the country for thirty years. And I was always kind of curious about this earthquake. You know, it's not just one area, it's a whole world. We're trying to get to the bottom of it. We're trying to, I said, we're trying to get to the bottom of it, we're trying to understand it ourselves. Just like somebody made the, I think somebody had said something within three or four years, we're the earthquake capital of the world now. Not, not a good thing, or.
Kenny is also a craftsman in leatherwork. He makes saddles?
Saddles, yeah.
Yeah. And a rope or?
Over, it won't.
Welcome, welcome to, uh, our council meeting.
I'm glad you wanted to.
I'd like to acknowledge and properly embarrass an outstanding young woman that we have with us today. Autumn, and she, um, I think we've all known her success from Pawnee Pawnee. But it wasn't until I started my foundation on the OSU campus and I saw what a true leader she is, what how, um, outstanding she has done and how she is respected over there and how she has risen to, what award did she get recently? I see it was. And how many?
Forty-one.
Out of how many students?
About the one percent.
One percent.
So, um, I just wanted to acknowledge her today and let her know how proud we are of her.
Yeah.
That's right.
All of you have always done a swell crowd.
Can you go to USC next, right?
USC?
Outstanding. Come home?
Not really.
Okay, I have a few things for open forum. Um, I just wanted to know two updates or updates. Are you in here? Our website?
Yeah, people send content.
Okay, well, I was listening on it earlier this weekend, um, our committee's commission isn't updated.
It, it got updated yesterday.
So might need somebody to update it? Well, just, just a reminder, because after, you know, for various reasons, the other thing is the Aaron Rockland presentation tomorrow. A lot of people don't even know about it. I know it's, I guess, the city doing it or something? Is it the city or the partner?
No.
Who's doing it? What's going on about it?
Whites, Whiteson Luxembourg, their law firm out of New York, is doing it. And they, they contacted us to see if we had a space big enough to accommodate, because they didn't have any buildings downtown. We're not associated with it for a variety of reasons. One, they're not, they're not paying for, uh, Indian plaintiffs, uh, specifically because they don't want a chance that it'll be removed from state court to federal court, which has already happened. So there's no benefit to us participating, because it doesn't benefit Pawnee Pawnee people. And, and secondly, because we are in litigation with our federal agencies and we can't control the narrative of what's said at the meeting, we don't want to be involved in that. That doesn't mean that, that you can't show up and listen, because I'm sure they're gonna present useful information. They, but it's basically the same presentation that we had with our earthquake town hall, with the joint earthquake town hall with the city of Pawnee, uh, back in November. It, it, except there's gonna be a, a celebrity or whatever, a, a, a named person gonna be speaking. Yes, ma'am?
So we have some for reference?
Uh, do what?
Do you have some revenue for a building reference?
Um, no, I'm gonna head and waive it because, uh, Mr. Poynner has also been involved and he's helping us collect Indian plaintiffs. Now, Whiteson Luxembourg is not doing Indian plaintiffs, but Scott Poynner is, is working with us to get, uh, Indian law owners, Indian landowners, plaintiffs, so potentially bring maybe litigation in the future in tribal court. And so he's, he's doing a lot of work on our part to do it, and since he's a co-sponsor of this event, we went ahead and waived the fees. It's, I think it's gonna be an hour, twelve to one over a lunch break, so.
Okay, I just, I just wanted that clarification, because we had heard about it and I had some, um, pumpers from the, from the tribal council call me out. About the host burn or any of the feet there, and there was one on and I was just, you know, and I was like, I don't know. And once again, I'm gonna say that, I don't like not knowing. I don't like that, you know, so, um, that's why, I just want to get clarified, so I can call them, they probably won't come.
No, I can.
Because there's, you know, I don't know what, you know, I didn't know what was going on. I didn't know if we were part of it or anything, so thank you for the clarification.
I just have one more, one comment. Um, I'd like to know when we're gonna reschedule the housing and council joint meeting? Then since August, I think, right? When we cancel that, August, late August? I'd really love to get some of these things settled.
This says something. Okay.
Brandy?
Oui.
I, I want to say two things.
Okay.
Please, while we.
Anthony, uh, are you gonna be nice? Alright, go ahead. Stay away.
And, and the paper, you know, our city is asking for help to obtain a dog to run patrol car. And I was wondering if our council or people could help with the donation, if they haven't already, to try to purchase a dog to drive, to ride with the patrol. That's what I was wondering, if anybody had any consideration of that, you know.
Drug dogs?
Other than?
Yeah, drug dogs. Yeah.
Yeah.
And the drug dog won't be driving.
And the other question, the other thing I have, and I have presented to, uh, Roger Smith twice. And when, this is like the fourth time. And when my spouse was living, we could not go to the woods to eat because it's so noisy. They moved those chairs around and he, he had very severe hearing impairment. And we couldn't go to eat because of those chairs, they're noisy. And the servers, the back door chairs, and the tables together, and so we couldn't eat there. You know, we'd have to order out. And I told Roger, when they were having that, that last spring, when they were having that, that ground breaking out there for this thing, and I was down and he was just smiling at me. I said, don't smile at me. I'm asking you, can't you just go to True Value or someplace and let those, something to go under those chairs that wouldn't be noisy and hurt people and cars there, they're going, and enjoy their meal? And that's the last I heard. So that's why I don't go to eat, I wouldn't play. True story.
Alright. I will ask.
Thank you.
Um, FYI for, oh, okay. No, wait, you're going to start. FYI to council, I received a resignation letter from Ellis Horace Chief from Taro. Also received a resignation from Morning. Also received a resignation from Hornet Moni Porche Chief off of the Housing Authority. So just letting you be aware of that. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to bring that to the end. You know, we, we discussed, we've been discussing that for several years now about meeting with these other tribes in the area, the local council, state, this, that. You know, bringing them out here to our reservation out here and having a meeting and discussing with them about, you know, things that concern our tribes and how we can work together. You know, we've, even just something recently, I think we just discussed even about our boss. Just other issues, whoever, to see how, you know, we can work together, be good neighbors. And I want to know, are we, are we still looking to do that?
I'll be sure to...
I'll be there for a while. Because I, myself, I still think there'd be something.
Yes.
Can we make a special invitation for them to attend the... You, you are...
Unicop?
Unicop, yeah.
Well, you know, I think for that, but I would still, something just us, you know, us personally, you know, to, to invite these, these tribes and tribal leaders to come down here. You know, and tell them, you know, we want to have this, this good relationship with them, you know, and try to, you know, see what they're, maybe some, maybe they'd be willing to talk about maybe certain issues that, that they may be having to deal with. Some of these might be as far as as well, you know, but that, that's my thoughts, you know. It's always been my thought. You know, when I first got out here, Marshall was, Marshall's thought too, you know, was to have these, these people come down here. And I think we're just being in a good gesture and, and something that we've been built for myself. You know, there's things that, that kind of like Unicop, you know, there's things that's going to affect a lot of us, a lot of our tribes that, that we could kind of stay together, fool together, support one another that, you know, it might be beneficial for us, you know. Because we all know that there's things that goes on here in the tribe that some, maybe larger tribes, they make decisions that ultimately I think, you know, affect us morals, or we might not necessarily have to say so. But I'm a firm believer in the strength in numbers, you know. And if we can get these guys together and say, you know, we, we want to work together and be good neighbors, then maybe, you know, something like that, you know. Focus down a little if need.
With that, I talked to John Shop out of Ojo, who's a teacher. And he said that he would be interested in, so also Trey Howe of the Punkus said that he would be interested in, you know, our joint reading. It's just a matter of timing and when and where and...
Well, let's, let's, let's do this then. And, and I will initiate a letter to them asking for that. What I need from the council is topics. So...
Which one?
Topics. Give me some topics that I can discuss on topics and I'll ask them for topics. And maybe we can just, rather than have like all a guest specifically, we can just have a summit or...
Well, you can talk about this current, this new administration, you know, our concerns or anything about that.
Okay.
Maybe economic pay to do that. There's some Georgia issues that, you know, we're looking at Buffalo. You know, most of the tribes have that wood farm thing going up there, you know. This is different things. That maybe we can have that, air tribe of commerce amongst ourselves or something was to develop, you know. Maybe educational culture or something like that.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that. I'll do that, I'll share. Cindy, remind me of the...
Cindy, Cindy.
Just talk my name.
I was thinking, you know, kind of pick a date.
Well, I think one of the things is that we're going to have to find, what, what you just said is that we're going to have to find a date to take it all.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the hardest thing for tribal leaders.
Well, what I'm suggesting, like, if you pick a date though, then they can pencil that in their calendar right now. You know, where they can say that date because they're coming from.
Probably needs to be thirty to ninety days out.
It's somewhere in the spring, you know, March.
Yeah. So thirty to ninety days out, okay. Yes.
Are you guys talking about the United Native Nation of Oklahoma?
They're coming here on the third.
I'm the, I'm the chairman of the Legislature and the Communication Committee. A little letter, talk about it, and the board, they, they actually met last week. And I think they already set a date for a meeting once a quarter. And one of my jobs as communications director is to try to get more tribal leaders to show up. Because we're, we have a lot of problems. We'll get maybe ten to twelve tracks there, we can get all of us, so. I'm happy to help in any way I can, stuff like that.
Well, how long would the meeting take?
The meetings, we actually usually have the meetings, it's usually about three hours. There's usually about twelve presenters. And we have one every quarter, but sometimes we have special meetings. So I think what you guys are talking about, maybe something that you might need with the board that could really help that.
Well, all the board, all the appointed, so we haven't met yet.
We haven't done it long ago and...
George. George, yeah. And Ed Weenan.
So it is...
That's what he's on. So we're supposed to meet Friday. To discuss the agenda.
Chairman Coffee, the fire president, never part chair, you know, type of, you know, you know, that's a two things, well, they never just bad communication or words like that. And that's kind of how a lot of times we bring these issues up, just like we have. I know this is not one of the things you guys are going to be speaking about. We've been, one of the things they asked us to do a year ago was to try to get the tribes to listen to our town because we were having a lot of problems getting communication correct.
Okay, well, thank you. But this is not that.
I know you...
You didn't know that, so it's like, it's like exhortative or nothing. All right, well, that moves us down to item number fifteen, which is executive session, executive director, annual evaluation. Is... Adrian?
We're, we're, I just want to say, I think that, you know, if you need any help, you know, organizing. Cindy, you know, if you need any help organizing this or if Bruce wants, let me know. I'll be, well, we would, we would, yeah.
I think it would be better like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's more about this.
You know, more, uh, everybody here.
Even the lunch. Have a panel?
Do you, do you want to be evaluated today or are you taking it?
I can get a whole...
It doesn't matter.
And that way they can give us the form.
Yeah.
I mean, usually we have a week to fill it out before.
Oh, yeah.
The next week, we're not meeting.
So do you want to table it and start calling?
Yeah, this is table. But... You want to do that?
Yeah.
Some, some don't want to come back.
I mean, I live here, so I don't come back.
I'm here.
Yeah, but, yeah. What, what do you all want to do? Do you want to evaluate or do you want to table it and wait until next time?
Oh, I want to table. Well, I, I want to table. I just, I, chief, what is your one?
I honestly...
He said, he said he's contracted by DC, but the practice don't help.
Yeah, this is table.
I make motion to table executive session evaluation for the ED.
All right, I'll settle. So with that...
You have a question?
Oh.
Adrian?
So with that, we need to have a, 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 a vote. Here we go.
Oh, he's not going to be able to make that, he thinks others will come with him. Do we need him here for a necessary report?
As, as long as he gives us the documents, we can do it. Okay. So, thank you. So call for the vote.
Mary Littleson, yes, Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Anderson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spargo, chief?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
All right, so executive session is tabled for the next council meeting. There is a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to hear a motion.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second from Angela. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any votes can stay. We adjourn.